We will soon begin our meeting. Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks, please begin the recording and display any relevant documents for each agenda item.
The recording has begun.
Thank you very much. Corey, roll call.
It's, you want to introduce first?
That's it?
You want to introduce first? Good evening.
Did I say good evening?
No. You got your spiel.
Yeah. Good evening, Corey. Let's get started. So roll call. Oh, wait, no, I see. Yeah. I see. I don't have a color printer. That's my problem. All right. Good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, regular meeting of Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. The time is 7:02 PM. Please note that it's supported with physical distancing during the public health emergency in accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order that relaxed Brown Act rules during the public health crisis. We're conducting the meeting via video conference. Because we are video conferencing, we'll follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when commissioners, staff, participants, and the public will provide comment. If you have called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. Please practice consider video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call. Now, Corey.
Thank you. Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll call this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Warren? I see you there. Can you, for the record, say President Warren?
Present.
Thank you. Vice President Vaughn?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Commissioner Price?
Here.
Commissioner Sreen?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
And Commissioner Kearney?
I'm here.
Right. So all commissioners are present. And for the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters and staff roll call. Assistant Fire Chief Glass?
I'm here.
Thank you. I believe Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District's Sports Services Manager Snow is...
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, you are there. Thank you. I didn't see you on the list. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott?
Here.
Emergency Services Manager Captain Gluhem?
Present.
General Manager Logan?
Present.
District Legal Counsel Chelliden?
Present.
District Legal Counsel Coelho?
He'll be joining later. I'll be texting him when his items come up.
Thank you. Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks?
Present.
And Consultant for Technical Services Bebe?
Present.
Presenters and staff are all accounted for.
Thank you very much. All right. All right, so we'll move on to item two, which is the Commission President's remark. So first of all, I'd like to say that it was nice to, today, to go look outside and see stuff falling out of the sky, and for once it wasn't ash. It was actually water, you know? That was a nice change of pace. So hopefully, it looks like that the fire season is coming to an end. But as we saw from the notes, what happened last night, that there still is danger out there with the winds and that fire up on Michael Lane that could have been much worse if the firefighters and residents hadn't been as aware and as fast as they were. Looking at the agenda once again, the amount of staff work that has gone into this is a testament to the, you know, the diligence, dedication of the staff, and actually, the other members of the commission who work and help to compile this. As you'll notice, the staff has revamped, continued to revamp and revise the agenda. It's now subject oriented, which keeps our flow going, you know, so we talk about one topic, one time, with all the relevant information in one place, which the idea is, is that we can have the conversation about a topic, close it out, and move on in the agenda, so we're not bouncing around. The other things that have been, you know, important that the staff's been working on, besides continuing the cert activities in this, you know, time of social distancing. You know, we had an emergency repair to a hydrant that got taken care of over the last month. The staff's been preparing to respond to additional tasks we received as a result of the audit, which is, you know, going to be ongoing for the next year, which is, you know, strategically important for the district. And so I think it's, you know, I want to recognize that, the work that the staff is doing, continuing with the preparation for the strategic plan, all of these things in this, you know, age of social distancing, where nothing is easy. You just can't meet someone and whiteboard it out. Everything takes much longer than it used to. So I want to thank the staff and the commissioners for keeping us moving along. And with that, we'll move on to item three. All right. This is public comment. Members of the public, please note that we are accepting comments on items not on the agenda now, and will allow time for public comments that are on the agenda when we discuss each item. The commission requests that members of the public hold their comments until the designated public comment period for each item, which I'll indicate by asking, is there any public comment on this item? So let me read it, read the public statement. So that we've changed this from what we've done in the past. I'll read it for the official record. It, in the past, we had stated that people could talk about any subject during this period. We're asking that this be reserved for any topic that's not on the agenda. And so if something is on the agenda, we will ask the member of the public to hold that till we actually get to that relevant discussion. Once again, getting, keeping the agenda items all together. So persons wishing to address the commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussions or actions tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the, unless the number of speakers requires the commission president to impose shorter time limits. All right. That being said, do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda? All right, hearing none. We will now move on to item four, Consent Calendar and Changes to the Order of the Board of Commissioners Agenda. All right. So we have for the consent calendar, we have items four A through F. For, excuse me, item A, Approval of Draft Minutes of October 1st, 2020 Special Meeting. Approval of Draft Minutes of October 20th, Regular Meeting. Received Financial Statement Package Period for October 2020. Received Disbursements of November 2020. Cancellation of December 2020 Regular Commission Meeting. And Adoption of Resolution 20-33, Setting forth the Board of Commissioners 2021 Regular Meeting Schedule. So we've got a change there from things in the past, where we're actually putting on the consent calendar, the actual motion to cancel the regular meeting in December. Normally, in the past, we would have, we would have done that at the end of the meeting tonight. We're moving it to the consent calendar. The other item is, is that we're rolling in the schedule for 2021 into the consent calendar. All right, are there any comments for staff on these items?
I think if I can just really quickly just point out, the outline for the minutes, you'll notice, has changed from the past. I've gone more now to, it's a bit of an action minutes with just a little bit, maybe a little bit more descriptive than, than regular action minutes. But I've also included timestamps, so that when you watch the video back, if you're looking for a certain portion of the, of the old videos, which are posted to our website and our YouTube channel, you can just jump right to that section easily. And then for the financial statement package, there was a typo on page five, which I have, I sent you the corrected, updated one, and I posted the updated to the public. And I think no other comment on anything else.
Great. Thank you, Corey. All right. Are there any questions from commissioners on the items? Or would any commissioner like to pull or add any items from the consent, or suggest a change to the order of the agenda? All right, not hearing none. I will now entertain a motion, and I'll need a second. Sreen moves. Thank you, Roger. I need a second.
Excellent, second.
Thank you, George.
Can we just, can we just confirm that there's no public comment on the consent agenda, please?
Is there any public? Hang on, Chris. It's in the script. We'll get there. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Hearing none. Is there any public comment on these items? Confirm there's no public comment on these items? Now, if there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Corey. We'll now move on to item five, Essential Government Functions Report. Item 5A, Receive Report on Santa Clara County Public Health Order. The Health Officer COVID-19 Related Orders. General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Yes, thank you, President Warren. After a rapid surge of positive COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations, the county has been moved into the purple tier of the state COVID-19 framework. More than 94% of the state of California has been moved into the purple tier. Purple tier regulations are the most restrictive in the state framework and are, and are effective. 12 AM, Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. Santa Clara County strongly discourages travel outside the Bay Area even for the upcoming holiday. California is also strengthening its face covering guidelines to require individuals to wear masks whenever outside the home with limited exceptions. Next slide, please. This slide is the requirements for indoor reduced capacity and closed indoor with open door, with, without, open outdoor modifications. And I hope that this will be a handy guide for you and the public to use as we work through this very difficult time right now in the county. That includes the county being in the purple tier with the holidays coming. And there will be a lot of opportunities for us to slip even into more dire circumstances in less remediator measures are made, and that's to protect our hospitals and our medical clinics. So thank you. End of report.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on those items? Hearing none, we will now move to item six, the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Management Audit Report. Item 6A through 6C, which are A, Receive Update on the County of Santa Clara Board of Supervisors October 6th, 2020 Final Adopted Minutes Related to the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. Receive Monthly Report Presented by District Administration to the County of Santa Clara Management Audit Division and to the November 19th, 2020 County of Santa Clara Finance and Government Operations Committee FGOC Meeting and the November 19th, 2020 County of Santa Clara Housing, Land Use, Environment, and Transportation Committee HULET Meeting. Item C, Receive Management Audit Division Cover Letter of the, of the County of Santa Clara Board of Supervisors, November 19th, 2020, Santa Clara County Finance and Government Operations Committee FGOC Meeting and the November 19th, 2020 County of Santa Clara Housing and Land Use, Environment, and Transportation Committee HULET Meeting. General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Thank you, President Warren. To the commissioners and the public, this is going to be a bit of a long report because of its importance to the future activities, the current activities of the fire district. So I would like to go through each of the items from the October 6th, 2020 Board of Supervisors Meetings and confirm the final approved minutes for those meetings. I referenced last month, the report that was the summary of minutes, and some of the content of those minutes is now in a final approved form, which may be different than the summary of minutes. So let me just read through them and then take any questions when I get to the end of items A, B, and C. So item 13 of the summary of minutes, or of the approved minutes, and you have those copies there in front of you. The Board directed the administration to collaborate with LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission of Santa Clara County, related to prioritization of a countywide fire protection service review and other service reviews. Within that item was the Board directed administration to collaborate with administration from Los Altos Hills County Fire District related to providing public and confidential documents to the Board, including but not limited to pending transfers of property and matters, matters of significant interest or concern as identified by county council. And I'm just pleased to report the county council and myself as district administration, Corey, as district clerk, are going through these processes, answering any questions the county council may have. Number three, the Board directed the administration to report to the Board with options for a comprehensive, independent operational option study, including but not limited to recommendations in the management audit of South County, County Fire District, and directed the administration from Central Fire Protection District to identify services plan and financial plan implications of any options studied by the independent consultant. This report of this item was agendized today, November 17th, of the Board of Supervisors Meeting as Agenda Item 26. And as commissioners, you received a number of updates from me during the week regarding this item. The item for the Board of Supervisors Meeting today was postponed to December 15th, 2020, per the request from President Chavez of the Board. Further updates will be coming from me as this matter works its way forward. The Board directed administration to ensure robust public outreach to all affected stakeholders with special emphasis on outreach to the general public and community. So all of those items, as you see them in the minutes presented to you tonight, were a part of item 13 related to Los Altos Hills County Fire District. Now, item 14 was the Management Audit Report for County, for Los Altos Hills County Fire District was accepted by the Board of Supervisors as amended, and the amendment excluded Recommendation 1.2 related to suspension of delegation of authority. The Board directed the administration of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District to report to the Board on a monthly basis until October of 2021 through the Housing, Land Use, Environment, and Transportation Committee, which we call HULET, and the Finance and Government Operations Committee, which we refer to as, as FGOC, and the Management Audit Division related to the recommendations in the management audit of the district. Now, that item 14 is significantly changed from the summary of minutes. I just want to call that to your attention, because there was some confusion about a report being in there, and so that was straightened out in the final approved minutes from the Board of Supervisors. Item 15 on the Board of Supervisors Meeting, October 6th, referenced, accepted as amended to call for a comprehensive review, including evaluation of the use of service zones in any review of Recommendation 2.3, 4.1, and 5.1 related to the potential consolidation and expansion of the four existing fire districts. Item 16 was application by Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District for the dissolution of the South Santa Clara County Fire District and the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, and annexation of their territories into the Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District. This item, by action of the Board of Supervisors, was tabled indefinitely at the request of Supervisor Semidion and Vice President Lawsonman. Item 17 on the Board of Supervisors Meeting was requesting the Santa Clara County Local Agency Formation Commission to pursue proceedings for the dissolution of South County Fire District and the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, and annexation of these territories into the Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District. That item was deleted at the request of Supervisor Cortese. Item 18 of the Board of Supervisors Meeting, October 6th, was adopt the resolution of the governing board of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, rescinding its delegation of authority to the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners, and initiating application by the Los Altos Hills County Fire District requesting the Santa Clara County Local Agency Formation Commission pursue proceedings for the dissolution of South Santa Clara County Fire District and the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, and annexation of their territories into the Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District. This item was tabled indefinitely at the request of Supervisor Semidion and Vice President Lawsonman by the Board of Supervisors. And then Los Altos Hills County Fire District Administration will be reporting monthly to the Management Audit Division, HULET, and FGOC committees on each of the items on the audit report recommendations, and following the progress of the proceedings from the LAFCO on countywide fire protection service review, and from county administration on the comprehensive review of fire services in the county of Santa Clara. District Administration will also be communicating with county auditors and county council pertaining to items and activities of the district, subject to the recommendations in the management audit report. And this is a end of my report on 6A. Be glad to take any questions or any clarifications if needed prior to going on with my report on 6B. Okay, hearing none. 6B, the District Administration Cover Letter and the initial October Report to Management Audit Division, HULET, and FGOC for the November 19th Committee Meetings is included, or are included in your agenda packet. The report utilizes the Management Audit Division Report Matrix that was submitted to FGOC and HULET committees, because it is a familiar format for purposes of the initial report, and provides continuity in transmittal of information. District Administration looks forward to providing the Management Audit Division and FGOC and HULET committees with monthly reports, and seeks to ensure the reports provide the information necessary for progress in the management audit and the recommendations process. The third column of the matrix, and hopefully, Sarah, do you have that matrix up that you can put up?
I'll put it up.
Thank you. Do you want to go back to the cover letter, Sarah? So this is the cover letter that District Administration, that would be, that, that I, that on behalf of President Warren and myself submitted to the two committees and to the management audit. And basically, it, it just transferred the matrix to them, but then it asked an important question, and that is, because this is the first time through this process for the District Administration, if there's any kind of change of format or any information that's necessary, this would be the time at the, at the November 19th presentation to get that information. So we, so then, then the December and ongoing reports will be more in tune with what FGOC Management Audit and HULET needs. Now, if we can go to the matrix, this was the matrix that was presented at both HULET and FGOC, and you'll see the first column, the second, the third column is now where the district is giving its administrative update. And so in the first quadrant, which is 1.1, this is where county council is to review and report to the Board of Supervisors, is assessment on making of agreements, donations, or loans resulting in subsidies in capital projects is consistent with legal requirements. Review includes proposed agreements or expenditures. And this really has opened a lot of insight, I think, for the district, this management audit recommendation, because staff and myself has been able to work very cohesively and constantly with county council, and I do thank them for their efforts in doing this. So we are sure that we are properly leveraging and utilizing district resources and funds appropriately within the specifications given to us here in 1.1. So just to review quickly what that content says, because it's very small, maybe a little difficult even for you to read, is the district. Let's see, district agreed with county council legal services effective August 19th as its exclusive legal service representative. Commission took action to terminate private legal counsel. Review, the, the county council reviews and signs as to form and legality on district agreements executed in October. County council provides guidance for processes for procurement of professional services and construction, construction services. County council reviews agenda drafts, provides agenda language, and that's to help with compliance with Brown Act. I very much appreciate those services. They participate in commission pre-meetings and commission meetings, thank you. And they collaborate with, and collaboration with county council supports the effectiveness of commission meetings and increases Brown Act compliance. The district provides records to county council pursuant to construction projects involving district hydrants and infrastructure, determine if its use of district's funds is consistent with all applicable legal requirements. Such projects include, one, legal advice for expenditures of funds for emergency replacement of a district-owned hydrant lateral and infrastructure. That just occurred in this month, and you're going to receive a report on that today. Secondly, request for research and advice on legal expenditures of funds for upcoming opportunities for a district to participate in water main replacement. Three, confirming legal expenditure funds for district hydrant relocations and hydrant additions to improve hydrant fire flow and to comply with county fire codes. Four, legal services for November construction agreement to repair sore erosion on district property due to a struck fire hydrant and resulting water damage. These district hydrant infrastructure, construction projects involve collaboration between the district, the water district, central fire, and county council. So that's just one month of updates of all the activities that occurred just pursuant to the management audit, section 1.1, that will be reported on Thursday to the two county committees. Moving on to section 2.1, the audit recommendation was to end discretionary tree service program, redirect funds to services to improve ability of properties to survive wildfire. Well, we had an experience with that today. So let me talk about how the report is going to the two committees for October. Dead dying eucalyptus tree removal is retired, project program is retired. District is currently providing an integrated hazardous fuel reduction program, IHFR. The district IHFR programs are designated around principles of fire science and fire safe council programs. District is targeting areas with high fire risk potential, such as district boundaries adjoining open space areas and densely wooded roads for priority hazardous fuel reduction efforts. IHFR programs contracted through Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council include home ignition zones, or HIC, surveys that educate residents in principles of property hygiene and structure hardening. Brush chipping for removal of hazardous fuel that have been cut, trimmed, pruned, collected, and stacked by residents. Construction of shaded fuel breaks along roadways for evacuation and escape routes. District also offers additional vegetation management mitigation programs, trainings and workshops, and resources to mitigate and remove hazardous fire fuel, and to offer protection and prevention from wildfire, structured fire, and fires caused by earthquake for public safety. So that is the response to the two committees for the month of October. Moving on, section 3.1, the recommendation is use county council for legal advice potential, avoid potential Brown Act violations. The response from the district is, as stated more specifically in 1.1 above, district is under contract with county council for exclusive legal services effective September 16th, 2020. District Commission took action to notify and terminate agreements with private legal counsel. Section four, recommendation 4.1 of the management audit says CWPP NX4, expert advice from Central Fire, align wildfire prevention and protection programs with risk and recommendations from CWPP and Central Fire. The response from the district is the Community Wildfire Protection Plan CWPP NX4, an addendum handbook written for residents by district staff, were adopted June 2019. District will commence review and revision of the district CWPP and companion documents in 2021. District will collaborate with Central District will collaborate with Central Fire again in the revision of the CWPP as it did in two thousand nineteen. CWPP is a foundational pillar of the district. The district is currently completing its successor strategic plan to the two thousand fifteen, two thousand, two thousand twenty strategic plan. The CWPP is the first goal in the strategic plan and the foundation for programs and the operational plan to carry out the district's mission to protect lives, property, and environment. Within the district, it serves for fires, disasters, medical emergencies, and other incidents through education, prevention, protection, and emergency response services, and to be responsible for the financial stewardship of the district taxpayers' funds. District budget allocations are aligned to support the district CWPP program. And recommendation five dot one procurement compliance. Effective September seventeenth twenty twenty, Hewlett Committee meeting district agrees with recommendation five point one. That was not added to the matrix. So the matrix now is updated to capture that last approval in compliance by the district to recommendation five dot one. District will follow county procurement policies and county council review as to form legality and advise the district procurement and practices. The district understands compliance with recommendation five point one can be accomplished in this manner. District is utilizing county procurement policies and procurements and procedures. County Council provides review of vendor agreements with respect to procurement of goods, of services. District has procurement exclusive legal services of county council and has terminated agreements for legal services with private legal counsel. In early October, district sent notices to ongoing vendors and service providers stating, and I quote, the district is reviewing its existing and upcoming agreements and is complying with Santa Clara County procurement policies and procedures. To assist us in this effort, Santa Clara County Council will be providing legal review and advice of the district for all legal matters, including purchasing procurement of services and goods, bidding processes, and contracting with vendors. This process will reduce the risk of inconsistencies for noncompliant contracting or contracting for prohibited services by the district. The district welcomes the advice provided by county council and district compliance with county procurement policies and procedures. Thank you again for the ongoing business relationship with Los Altos Hills County Fire District. We look forward to continuing our business relationship as we work together to provide fire safety services for the Los Altos Hills County Fire District community. And so that basically is a pretty specific summary of what the matrix says and what will be reported to the two committees on Thursday. What all of this is doing is it's teeing up what you're going to hear throughout this whole meeting for the with the commissioners and with the strategic plans and goals. These statements are being foundational now to how the district is operating on a daily, monthly basis. I do want to give a report on item six dot C. In addition to the district's cover letter and the district's matrix, also management audit in six dot C. And you have that in front of you. Is their cover letter, management audit's cover letter, sent to the committees? And then the letter is only sent after the management auditors review the district's response and the October report on each of the recommendation items. If you read through the cover letter from management audit to the committees, the conclusion states, we believe that the fire district has implemented or is on track to implement the audit recommendations as adopted by the Board of Supervisors. So it's my goal as district administration, and I'm sure your goals as commissioners, that every month there will be a similar kind of statement at the end of the auditor's review. And that is that they believe and find that the audit recommendations are either being implemented or in the process of being implemented. That would be a success from my perspective. In summary, what we have here and the reason I spent the time to go through this is because it does set the foundation going forward into two thousand twenty one. And that this summary process that we're going through is a very thorough process of accountability and reporting based on the Board of Supervisors' direction to the district administration through all the motions that you heard me read. And I want to express my really sincere appreciation to county council team, to the management auditors, to county staff and district staff, commissioners and consultants for all of us pulling together for these reports that will be delivered to county committees on November, on November nineteenth, Thursday. And thank you for your patience and hearing this, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commission?
This is Duffy speaking. Jay, that letter that went from the auditors, that's signed by Cheryl Sokov?
That is correct.
Okay, very good, very well done, and I appreciate very much all the effort that's gone into it. And great getting that letter from her. I think that's reassuring that we're meeting the objectives. And by the way, the format with the matrix, she accepted the matrix format. Is that correct?
Well, she didn't give me any feedback differently, and probably that would that feedback would come from the two committees. Because it's to it's to management audit. I think that we would, as as staff to manage to the committees, we would make the adjustments based upon what the committees say, the Board of Supervisors. They serve as the director. The Los Altos Hills.
Fine. Okay, thank you. Well done.
Thank you, Commissioner, for those comments.
Any other commissioner comments?
Eager to hear.
All right, any public comments on the side? Or was there was there comment? All right, is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. We'll now move. Thank you, General Manager Logan. That was a quite a long report. Thank you for reading it out. It was important to do that. All right, we'll now move to item seven, Santa Clara County Fire Chief Report. Item seven A, receive the monthly report of October twenty twenty. Assistant Fire Chief Glass, please provide the report.
Good evening. Thank you, President Warren. Sarah, if we can move to the the second page. Just a quick snapshot of what we did in October's year to date, six hundred and fifty-four calls. This is twenty percent decrease since one year ago. We had been looking at decreased steady numbers below our average response, and we attribute that obviously to COVID. I know I feel like a broken record saying that over and over again. We did see a increase in calls during the month of August, but that was due to the CZU complex fire. I did receive some feedback from the public, and I did want to address some of those tonight in this report. You'll notice that in our lower left part of the chart, we did have average code three response and world density exceeding thirteen minutes and two of the the response areas. And the first unit I just want to call out is Battalion seventy four. And that unit, we don't typically track. We posted here because we like to see the numbers. But what we had happen here was this was a rescue response, was a north of Page Mill on two eighty. It ended up being located in the Palo Alto area. And we had a delayed response for the the command element. The battalion chief was coming from headquarters. So it was a little bit of a haul to get there. The first due arriving units that seemed did meet their their response times and requirements for that part of town. The second one was Engine seventy-five. It did need to respond into right on the border. It's Loyola and El Monte's area on Macresta. And what we had actually was a pretty rare occurrence, but we actually had three concurrent calls all come within two minutes of each other. One in Los Altos area, one in Loyola, and one in El Monte's area. And so as we shuffle to move the rigs, sometimes rigs get assigned, and then the computer aided dispatch system will go ahead and assign the next closest rig. And eventually, sometimes these numbers do catch up with us. That was an EMS call. It was a basic life support call. Patient was found in good condition and transported to the hospital. And so this is one of those things that we, as much as we prepare and try to adapt and overcome to that, there are days that we get caught with multiple calls back to back, and we see that reflected in our data. So there was also some discussion or requests about the delay in the receiving the report. We were delayed. We had a computer technology problem with our firehouse software. We did need to get that rectified before we could release the report. We did communicate that to the clerk of the board to advise her that we would not not be meeting our timeline to turn it in, but we did get it in today's before the for the meeting. There is another significant anomaly on the cover letter. There was no significant event reported, but yet we're showing dollar dollar loss value of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. This is attributed to a filter that we use. These were car fires. This was two car fires that totaled two hundred and forty thousand dollars. But there was no life loss. So typically, a car fire is not a significant event that we would not typically report out on. But because of the value, the dollar value of these vehicles, one was a Mercedes valued over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and another high-end SUV to make up the additional hundred thousand. We thought it was important to make sure that we reflected that in the dollar loss value and then just speak to it in the report. But because it didn't, I had no significant life loss or personal injury, there wasn't a need to call it out in the cover letter. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions regarding the report. We've obviously been in constant communication with the general manager regarding several of the projects ongoing and within the district, and we appreciate the the support and the open flow of communication. And on page three will be the map that shows the dispersment of the calls.
All right, thank you, Chief. This is Chief Glass. Are there any discussions from the commissioners? Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. We'll now move to item eight, receive report and provide direction to General Manager regarding proposal for capital improvements and associated costs at the El Monte fire station and report back at the next district commission meeting. Mr. Snow, please provide the report.
Good evening, everyone. Dave Snow, Santa Clara County Fire. So there were two, two project approaches that we're looking at. The first is to address the cert needs. And we had an online meeting on November, November second with cert stakeholders, Katon Stewart, Gluhan, and our Santa Clara County Fire Department team. We now understand the scope and needs fully. We had an electrical contractor do a site walk with us, and he's estimating between thirty-five hundred and forty-five hundred for wiring and installation of the ham radio. We're confirming and finalizing the cabling and tower costs estimated at about a thousand. And we're finalizing specific equipment to utilize for the ARC Wi-Fi. It's our intent that we'll provide, present a final estimate for the approval by the commissioners at your December fifteenth meeting. And I believe I saw Captain Gluhan on here earlier. If there's anything you wanted to add to that. Not sure if she's still on. Okay.
I am. Thank you, Dave. That's that hits the mark with what we're looking for. We also have Neil on, Katon from CERT and Victoria BB, if they have questions.
Neil, did you have anything or that that summarizes kind of where we are, but it's our intent that we can sort of get what we need to do and wrap this up before the new year.
Well, David, fortunately, we we don't have a meeting in December. We left the report back in January.
All right, we can adapt. Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt President Warren. Neil raised his hand. Neil, did you have a comment you wanted to make before we move on?
It was the same thing about December, so it's already done.
Great, thank you.
Great. And so moving on to the architectural proposal. Santa Clara County Fire Department has an existing agreement for architectural and related professional services with Holly Peterson and Snyder Architects. We have capacity within that agreement to have them help us with the El Monte Station projects. So we asked HVS to perform a site walk, and they provided a proposal to us for scoping and design phase related to various projects. The deliveries of their preliminary phase will be an architectural plan and sketches showing proposed improvements, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural narratives discussing any modifications needed for those systems and a preliminary cost construction estimate. So I'll present all this information in writing ahead of the January meeting, but I can cover it verbally for now. Here are the following areas that we anticipate to be included in the renovation. One is to convert existing second floor restrooms into three individual gender-neutral facilities with showers. Two is to look at remodeling opportunities for the existing condition, the existing kitchen, better use of the space. Three is to explore adding a dedicated chief's restroom, battalion chief's restroom on the second floor. Four is to convert the existing chief's quarters into two individual rooms, each with two bunks and four lockers. Five is to modify crew quarters into individual spaces. Each space shall include two bunks and four lockers. Six is updating cabinets in your conference room two, two, three. Seven is review exterior grading and develop an accessible ADA path of travel and parking to meet current code requirements. Eight would be to explore modifications to the existing ground floor lobby to meet the current accessibility regulations and to provide better use of space. Nine is to convert the storage room into a dedicated exercise area on the first floor, room one oh two. Ten is to add two workstations to training room one zero six. Also included would be considerations to secure the hallway to create separate entrances to the training room as well as a distinct access to apparatus bay in the upstairs. Eleven is to remove carpet replaced with luxury vinyl tile flooring. And twelve is to paint the interior second floor and stairwells. So this initial scoping and design would include two to three interactive charrettes resulting in a basis of design package. I think it's important to note that these architects like to talk to the stakeholders, which is you as the commissioners, and you could appoint a committee to oversee it if you wanted to. And from those charrettes, kind of what you think of for environmental and sustainability considerations all the way through possible finishes, use of light and space, that would result in a basis of design package. From there, you would be able to review all or some of the projects to move into phase two, which is detailed design permitting, advertisement of the project, construction management, and commissioning services. So the proposal for phase one includes subconsultants for the structural, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. And that approximate cost today is eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. If the district wishes to proceed, we can place the approval of the scoping and design phase costs on your next agenda. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
All right, is there any questions from the commissioners about what Dave Snow has provided? Anything from the public? Okay, so David, if I understand correctly, so I think one thing you advise us to do is to first of all, hang on, I want to get, I want to get a sense from the commission that are we, is is the the proposal that Dave Snow has brought forward today, is it moving in the right direction with what the commission feels is the, you know, you know, appropriate direction for the station? Want to make sure we get a census of consensus of the commission, make sure that we are, you know, on the right track here. Sounds appropriate to me, Tyson.
Thank you, George.
You know, Carney.
Thank you, Terry.
I agree. Every one of those sounds like a reasonable thing to investigate and inquire on. It sounds like we are going to need someone to be a liaison for that effort to help it move efficiently, but I I concur.
Great.
I concur as well.
Training room, Mrs. Duffy, I would say that the training room, I think it's absolutely imperative that we get involved with that as a commission to make sure that the workstations are developed appropriately to meet the needs that we can have access and use it both of a training room and office space. So that sounds good to me. Is the eighty, eighty-two thousand or was that a hundred and eighty-two thousand for this charrette and the initial phase? I can't recall. What did Dave, Dave, what was it?
Sure, Commissioner, it's eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars, not one hundred and eighty-two. So that gets you phase one, and that gives you all the options so that you can look at your budget and decide we want to move forward on three things and not all twelve or two things or whatever the commission wanted to do. But that'll kind of get us those initial steps so that then you make an additional investment in phase two to kind of move forward. to kind of move forward and do those detailed design and permit requirements.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Duffey. Melvin, you got cut off there.
Yeah, I concur with, uh, with the study and I think that's the, uh, proper way to proceed and uh, I do believe that we should get involved and, uh, work as, uh, liaison and, uh, you know, it is our building, so want to make sure that we're involved in it and, and, um, participate in the, uh, design phase.
Great. So what I heard from was is that for the commission that we're, we're going in the right direction. That, that we're, we would like to move forward with coming back in January with the proposal for the phase one work on the, on the January agenda. But I also heard that we should appoint a liaison committee. Is that correct?
And through county council, um, we don't want to violate the Brown Act by having too many commissioners directly involved, but there's a value in what we saw play out for the cert needs through the stakeholders. Clearly your general manager and then, you know, I would leave it to council's discretion to advise on how commissioners should be involved.
Chris, any guidance here?
Sure. I mean, I think that in terms of between now and the January meeting, we didn't agendize appointment of a ad hoc committee. That's not subject to the Brown Act. And I'm aware of case law that says that you're really not supposed to do that without agendizing uh, that. So my suggestion would be that, uh, the general manager and the chair of the commission continue to work as the contact people between now and, and the January meeting. And then to the extent, uh, you want to have a longer term standing committee, what's called an ad hoc standing committee under the Brown Act, which would include less than a quorum of the commission uh, that wouldn't be subject to the Brown Act, that you go ahead and put that on your January agenda and then, uh, vote on it at that time.
Okay. So thank you, Chris.
Uh, Captain Gluhann has a comment as well.
Denise, please.
Yeah, real quick, and again, a little granular and more maybe to, um, general manager and president's review, but uh, restrooms have always been a little bit of an issue around the training room, the downstairs access or access to the upstairs restroom. So if we can just make sure that we address that, if we're putting doors that limit access in anywhere. So that would be my only addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. All right. So it sounds like that what we need to do here moving forward is, is that Jay, you and I are going to be the point of contact between now and January on this project and in January we'll look at funding phase one and appointing an ad hoc subcommittee.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Anything else for this topic? Hearing none, Dave? Okay, we'll move on. All right. We'll now move on to item nine, receive the general manager report.
Yes, thank you, President Warren. You'll see the cover slide to the general manager report and I could not restrain myself than being able to first show you the photos of the district parcel after a property hygiene event. And, um, property hardening, but, uh, you'll hear more about that later when we get into integrated hazardous fuel reduction report. Uh, moving on to slide two, thank you, Sarah. Um, is an update on the commission vacancies. You'll see there and, and I'm hoping the public is tuned in and listening. The public is all invited. If they qualify in either one of these vacancies to apply, if they're interested. You'll see over to the right corner, this is the advertisement that is going to run four times. It ran in October, again in November and will be, um, in the town crier, the beginning of December. And then the end of December, which is right about the time that the application process will close, which is, uh, January ninth, uh, January ninth of twenty one. And then on January nineteenth of twenty one, which will be the next commission meeting. The applicants will be invited to speak to the commission, express their qualifications and their interest in being a uh, Los Altos Hills County Fire District Commissioner. The, once that occurs, the nominees will be, the district will transfer any paperwork that we have, uh, any letters to supervisor submitting's office. Application is done online. Those are not submitted to the district. And, um, supervisor Semenian will go through a vetting process with the applicants. Make his selection independent of any input or information from the district other than to be sure that the district advises if the applicants qualified by their residence, where the seat is that they're applying. And then supervisor Semenian will, uh, nominate those individuals to the board of supervisors for appointment. Uh, that is the process for commission vacancies. Any question on that? Okay, moving on. Next slide, thank you. So I had the opportunity to speak with Zach Doll, who is the Town of Los Altos Hills Planning Director. And the town is looking at an opportunity for an expansion of the town complex, the town civic center, town hall complex. You'll see that there is, are some buildings right there, um, at kind of at the beginning of the roundabout circle. That's where the new, um, expansion would be. And part of that is about six hundred, six hundred square feet of open space that could be available for fire district offices. It's been quite daunting when we look at a way in which the fire commissioners and fire staff can be accessible to the public. El Monte Fire Station is not a good model for that. It's not a good dual use kind of facility where you have the public coming in to meet with, with civilian staff. And you're also running fire crews and doing fire protection, particularly with COVID nineteen. It's just not a facility where you can do mixed use. So town hall, this could be served as perhaps a, a community center uh, or a civic complex where the public can come and talk with representatives, commissioner staff from county fire, from uh, Los Altos County Fire, talk with, uh, staff from the town, the sheriff's office, uh, uh, annex is nearby and right at the end of the parking lot is Persama Hills Water District. So I could see this being a really nice opportunity for a governmental complex that would be very, I would think accessible and, um, advantageous to the community. Also, there is parking and safe parking there. Uh, parking at El Monte Fire Station is daunting, no matter what time of the day. And with that, I'll just ask the question, I don't know if Zach Doll is, Sarah, did Zach come on board with us or no?
I haven't seen him join, but I might've missed it. So Zach, if you're there, holler.
Okay, no Zach. Perhaps we were supposed to text him, I don't know. You might text him, Sarah. I don't know if you have his number or not, but I can do it. And if, and then we can bring him back on if he wants to make any comments about this. I believe, um, and I'll just ask Commissioner Tyson if that's okay. I believe this is on the agenda for the town city council. Is that correct, sir?
I've looked at the agenda and I'm sorry, I can't tell you whether that's the case.
Okay, all right. I looked at the agenda and I saw an item where perhaps it was, but I wasn't real sure. But I do think that this is coming up in front of the town council, uh, fairly, fairly soon. City council fairly soon. Okay. Uh, with that, uh, I'll just move on to the next slide. And, uh, I'll ask Commissioner Spreen if he can perhaps chime in when I finish this update. But, uh, Corn Dev is a really excellent, uh, website hosting service that started with the district back in, um, let's see, where's my date, May of two thousand eighteen. And they host and provide security and maintenance of our website and it's built on an application called WordPress. Corn Dev is restructuring its services and notify the district that our contract for services is up for renewal. Increase the price from two forty eight to nine to two ninety nine a month. And I will tell you from personal experience for the last two years I've been here in the district that it's been a delight to benefit from their solid services, their individual customer care. And it's a functioning website and they have good technical support. And with that, I'll just like to have comments, if any, from, uh, a person who I kind of deemed for purposes of this slide is our IT director. That's how I think of him. That's Commissioner Roger Spreen. Uh, and Roger, thank you always for helping translate what goes on with our IT, uh, back.
A little scared by that last bullet point. Please don't anyone remember that, that sentence. Um, yeah, we've been really lucky that when, uh, if you remember our previous, uh, website guide, I think Dave Snow was his name, if you'll, uh, ironically, um, when he retired, we found Justin, uh, and he's been wonderful, uh, been really helpful. Uh, especially with, with, uh, Sarah and Denise and Victoria and really working with whatever we needed. And really this is just, our year contract was up. This is a renewal, renewal, a renewal of, uh, what was a yearly contract. He's now moved to a very standard monthly credit card billing administration model, uh, and that's what this represents. Uh, and so this is really just a continuation of working with his services and, uh, it's, he's done the right thing by basically taking this off our shoulders. And so I, I heartily concur that let's continue with him and, uh, happy to, I'm glad it's working out. Really the people you should listen to are Victoria and Denise and Jay. And so, uh, this, I, this should be a no brainer.
Victoria, Denise, uh, Sarah, any comments from staff? Uh, you are on the back end of this website all the time, Sarah. Every time I do a general manager's report, you have wonderful, uh, updates on how you've upgraded and made the website much more prolific to the public. Uh, any comments as to how that functionality goes?
Um, I would just say, uh, that working with Justin has been pretty easy. Uh, he's very responsive. He finds a lot of workarounds for me. There are some, some limitations to what our website can do, but he's able to find plugins that we can use. For example, um, the announcement bar that we added during the CZU fire so that we could communicate efficiently and effectively to the public. Uh, and have that bar right up front so people could see it when they logged in. He added that for us when I asked him. Um, and he's been very helpful and kind of tutoring me through some of the functionalities of the website that I don't quite understand. Uh, not having a, a background in that and, and being familiar with different websites. So, um, yeah, I'd say he's been very helpful and I've enjoyed working with him.
I wanted to comment too, that Justin does not create content for us. We are the content creators. And must, most of our content comes from other content that we receive from PIOs, particularly uh, emergency services, PIOs or PG&E or the town, and we link into that information. So we don't devise or, or create, um, content. That makes the whole process of running a website much more simple. Uh, it, basically it's, it's a blog background, uh, content. We put in the, the plugins and we just, we create the content as we need. So as a result of that, Commissioner Spreen, it was fairly simple to move this agreement and have it reviewed by county council, come up with a thumbs up and then move forward with it. And I don't know, Chris Chellin and county council, if you want to make any comment, just to advise that this has been reviewed by county council.
Sure, I confirm that I did review it. My feeling was that it, it is an important contract to the district, relatively low dollar value. So rather than trying to reinvent the wheel, I did review the contract and I didn't have any concerns and, uh, and I think based on the performance of the vendor, it makes sense to continue. Thank you.
Thank Christopher for fast turnout on that. It's, makes it easy for all of us in terms of the timing. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, I believe that's the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, uh, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commission?
Uh, just, um, want, uh, want to move approval or excuse me, sorry.
Yep, we don't, um, and is there any comments from the public on this, our manager report?
Uh, this is Alan.
Two comments, yes. Sorry, Alan first followed by Jim, please.
Go ahead, Alan.
I'm quite surprised by the comment about utilizing space at town hall. That, that addition is a three to three and a half million dollar addition uh, to town hall that, uh, was necessitated by, um, the spatial requirements of the staff. So I'm quite amazed that, uh, any space would be available there, uh, for the fire district to use. Uh, the only comment I have about the website is that, uh, and I've mentioned it before, it'd be very helpful if the search feature could be improved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan.
Yes, my name is Jim Wasura. I'm also a resident in Los Altos Hills. And, um, I just want to encourage the idea of sharing office space uh, there at the town hall. I think that, uh, it would foster good synergy between the fire district and the town. And I believe that some increased cooperation on, uh, the fire fuel reduction programs and other programs will be an important part of what it will take to alleviate a lot of the anxieties that many residents have since the, uh, recent spate of fires. I appreciate that, uh, the residents would like to see some better cooperation. And, uh, this really could be a rather simple way to get that underway. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else from the public?
Uh, President Warren, I don't see any more comments from the public, but I will have you go off script for a moment to ask to approve, uh, item D, if you don't mind.
Okay, uh, so I need to go off script. I've been given direction that I can go off script here. That I need to have a motion to approve item D, which is approve and authorize execution of the corn dev maintenance agreement for Los Altos Hills County Fire District website. Um, Los Al, L A H C F D dot org for ongoing maintenance and support in the amount of two hundred and ninety five dollars monthly in an annual amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars for special projects to include emergency repairs that have been reviewed and approved by county council as to form and legality. All right, with that, I need a motion to adopt.
Bernie moves.
Bernie, any a second, please?
On second.
Melvin, thank you. All right, the item is now under discussion. Any discussion from the commissioners? Any comment from the public? Hearing none. Corey, we need a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Rich. Hey, sir, how'd I do off script?
Very good. I think you could probably run the meetings yourself now.
No, I need my training wheels. All right. Well, now move on to item ten, receive the county council report, item ten A. Introduction of Chris Chellidon, lead deputy county council as the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, um, council. District legal counsel, uh, Sheldon, please introduce yourself.
Sure, um, I would just like to say that I'm extremely honored and excited to, to work with the district as the district's legal counsel. Just in terms of a little background, in terms of my career, um, I've been at Santa Clara County Council's office for coming up on seven years. I manage a group of attorneys that work in the real estate and public works area. And then in terms of my portfolio of, of clients that I represent as the assigned counsel, um, in addition to Los Altos Hills Fire District, I also work with county fire. I work with South County Fire District. Um, I'm the assigned counsel for the roads and airports department and I also sit, uh, with the planning commission. So some particular interests of mine are, are contracting issues, public contracting issues, um, and related issues. Prior to being at, uh, Santa Clara County, I was with Santa Cruz County Council's office for nine years. Uh, where primarily I worked in the land use area. I also represented Santa Cruz County LaFco as general counsel, as well as the Santa Cruz County Sanitation District. And then sad for me to say, prior to that, I was in private practice for about ten years as well. So, um, in terms of personally, I do live in Santa Cruz. I've rented apartments over the hill, but with COVID, I've been working mostly out of the house and I have two kids in college at the moment. So that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Chris. Thank you for the introduction.
May I ask a question? This is Duffy speaking.
Please talk.
Okay, Chris, tell me, what is that sleeping on your bed?
So that is, uh, that's Shadow and what's funny about it is that, uh, that's our cat and usually he jumps up on my lap. But because this was a public meeting, I was going to discourage him from doing that. But in terms of internal conference calls, he usually gets up and looks, uh, in the camera, but he's, I think he's getting more attention during COVID than he's gotten. In the last nine months, he's gotten more attention than he's gotten in the previous six years of his life. So he sleeps a lot because I think he's got so much activity.
It was adorable. He was just cleaning himself a minute ago in the background. It was adorable. Thank you.
I'll have to get my, I don't have it, but I'll have to get my Los Altos Hills County Fire District background or I can keep Shadow if you prefer that.
He's better. Thanks.
Sure. Thanks. Any other discussion from the commissioners? Any questions from the public? Thank you, Chris, for the introduction. All right, we'll now move to item eleven, adoption of resolution twenty dash thirty four of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District declaring weeds or brush growing and or rubbish on, uh, certain described properties to be a public nuisance. Item eleven A. Item 11A, which is posting of public notices on January 6, 2021, and posting of non-compliance list. District Clerk Vargas, please introduce the item.
Okay, thank you. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We do this every year where we declare weed or brush through the offices of the agricultural commission, or yeah, Santa Clara County, and they provided a list, weed abatement report list. We will then have a public meeting in, I'm sorry, public hearing in January's meeting where the public can contest inclusion on the list. And I post a notice in the town crier prior to the meeting. Town crier posts on Wednesdays, so that'll be, I'd say January 9, I think, was the date. And then the week after that, so I'll have two postings. And that is the end of my report unless there's any questions.
All right. Thank you, District Clerk Vargas. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? All right, hearing none, I will now entertain a motion. I need a motion from commission member.
Vaughn, so move.
Thank you, Melvin. I need a second, please.
Nice, no second.
Thank you, George. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on the item?
If we go back to.
Neil has a comment.
Hang on, George, did you want, let's go, George, write orders for George. George, did you have a question, comment on the motion?
Just to clarify, I know that we focused really on weeds for the most part for this particular posting. And I'm just wondering about our mechanism for identifying brush as an increasing area of concern in our district. And when I say brush, actually, I mean anything that's dead, that serves as a fire hazard. Have we got, I don't know quite how to word this, to say, have we got any thoughts on how we might expand our outreach to look for and identify areas of brush and have them fold into this annual program in a way beyond what we've done before?
Denise, were you able to speak to that?
I think Chief Glass might have a comment on that.
Yeah, thank you very much, President. I just wanted to speak a little bit to the brush inspections that's done by the county fire crews that go out. And that is targeted on brush and overgrown structures, addressing. There's five or six different components that we look at specific to brush, and that is compiled in April. And then a list is provided that goes to the county weed abatement, and then we bring it here to the commission. And that's sometime in June where we levy that against the property where the commission makes that, you know, approval and recommendation and moves it forward. So there is one specific to brush. It comes a little bit later in the year, just for clarification.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Denise, anything from you?
So I agree, we could change language. We do try to incorporate hazardous fuel reduction. We could incorporate more of the vegetation management and fire science language that we've applied to some of our strategic planning, possibly in future languaging around this to start those motions of getting a more 360 on who's needing to do this and who's paying attention to it. Thank you.
Okay, George, anything else?
I have a question.
Yeah, Terry?
Yeah, sorry about that. So it's for county council. Is it, is the, I presume that the basis for this is property that's being declared a nuisance is, I mean, can anything, who decides what aspect of the vegetation or fuel on a property is the nuisance?
My understanding is that this program is run out of the agricultural commissioner's office. And the property owners are given notice and a chance to object or comment. In addition, our office has another team of code enforcement attorneys who do other types of public nuisance programs. And so, I mean, the definition of nuisance relates to threats to, the definition of a public nuisance relates to threats to the community, and those can be all different types of things. It doesn't necessarily have to be this narrowly focused. So essentially, someone in their professional judgment determines that something like brush or overgrown weeds constitutes a threat to the community, either for fire risk, vector control, it could be lots of different things. And then at that point, there needs to be some kind of notice and due process for the property owner. And then if the property owner doesn't abate the nuisance at that point, then this particular program involves leaning the property so that if the program pays for the cost of abatement, that the cost can be recovered from the property owner.
Excellent, thanks. So Chief Glass, is it then the fire marshal, or is it your crew? Or who decides based on fire science what is or is not a nuisance?
So we use the fire code for that. And specifically, county ordinance code A33 is what gives the authority to the fire district to be able to do that. And that's to the central fire district's fire chief. And so, yeah, we have, every year, we have a list of homes and residents that comes out from the fire prevention division. It's distributed to the resident, to the crews, excuse me. And then they go out and they drive the actual area and physically inspect each of the sites. Now, we don't actually get to all of the residents every year. We do it on a triennial basis. So we see every residence, every property, once every three years. And we document that, submit it to fire prevention, and they get a focused, if they have a violation noted, they get a focused visit from a fire inspector, deputy fire marshal. You get an opportunity to respond and to clean up that property. Then again, we bring the ability to lean the property to have that corrected as well. Chief Bowden has joined us too, and I don't know if chief, you'd like to elaborate that, anything on that?
Thanks, chief. I was actually getting pretty good at this. I raised my hand. And I apologize for being late. It seems like most of our cities have council meetings on Tuesday nights. And so I was jumping from one council meeting to this meeting, so I apologize for joining late. But chief is correct. It just depends on what area it is. If it's within the town proper, then within town ordinance code, it's pretty clear that it designates Santa Clara County Fire Department. In fact, town ordinance code is one of the few that actually spells out Santa Clara County Fire. Chief is have the authority to enforce, and we can certainly enforce the town ordinances. As Chris Chellidon said, there has to be due process, and there's a way about that we do that. And then the ordinances are a little bit different out in county unincorporated area. They don't always align. But we do have enforcement capability from a fire marshal perspective, both for the town and for the county unincorporated areas within the Los Altos Hills Fire District.
Great. Any further questions from the commission? Yeah, George?
So a follow-up from what you said, Chief Glass. Let's say we decided that we are, say, a particularly urgent or dangerous state. And that rather than a three-year rotation in terms of inspection of properties, we wanted to just push all in and say, dude, let's inspect every place this winter. How would we do that? How could we make that happen?
I think there are some ways to do it, but right now, the way that we're accomplishing this currently within the contract that the hills have, that Los Altos Hills County Fire District has with central fire district, we're using on-duty fire crews to go out into the community and to do that. And so with one unit available to search or look at all of the properties, it's a significant workload on top of their normal daily workload and response to calls. So again, I mean, we can look at defensible space inspectors while in specialist positions. We can, we can take a look at opportunities to leverage additional assets that the district may have available to go out and perform these functions, whether it's staff or fire district staff or the use of patrol staffing. So there's several different options, I think, that we have available to us. But we need to do some research, working with the district staff and at the will of the commission, of course.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, any further questions or comments?
Chief Bowden, did you want to add to that?
The only thing I was just gonna expand on, on that was the three-year mark. Commissioner Tyson is really the weed abatement when you get on the list. But that doesn't mean that we do not inspect properties that are not on that list every year. So we don't do our inspections on a three-year rotation. We do our inspections irregardless. But we would like to see expansion of that, not just in Los Altos Hills, but throughout the county. Because I think your point is an incredibly important one, is the more often you get eyes on property, the more, the better property hygiene that you're going to have within that area. And so really look forward to that discussion in the future.
Thank you, Chief Bowden.
Captain Gluehand, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just one more follow-up from some recent committee requests from local residents. We've had a lot of questions around creeks, which involve rubbish into this, this language. And those are private and public land crossovers. So addressing a kind of a united force and alignment to look at those specifically. Also, a lot of questions around other public lands like roadways, specifically state highways or interstates, and where that component might fit in. And I know this specifically addresses for private residences. But incorporating that, because we are getting a lot of complaints of those as nuisances also from the public. And in general, public lands that surround most of Los Altos Hills. So kind of that alignment and where do we look going forward? Again, I think that's a little more than this, but I just wanted to add some of the local comments I've been getting in my.
Thank you, Captain Gluehand. Okay, any public comments?
We had a hand raised by Neil. Neil, I don't know if you have anything, or if your question has been covered.
Yeah, I had raised my hand before everybody just spoke for 10 minutes about exactly the issue I wanted to raise. So thank you.
Perfect. And then Alan also has a comment.
Alan?
Yes, thank you. I guess the question I have relates to the definition of what is a nuisance and whether the ordinances are going to need to be changed. And if the definition of a nuisance is going to be broadened, obviously, the public should be informed of what the change in that definition is. And whether that takes place at the city, at the city level, at the town level. Because a change in the definition of what constitutes nuisance could expose people to an impact that they're not anticipating. So I guess I'd like to understand if this process is going to try to identify different things than it has done in the past. How does that process get implemented? Thank you.
So I don't think we're actually tonight discussing changing those definitions. I think the question, a broader question long-term is, do they need to be changed? And I think that's something we should probably, you know, have the county, you know, commission discuss at some further date. And the fire chief.
Good question, Alan.
Yeah, okay, with that, let's.
We have one final comment from the public. Sorry, Jim.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jim, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, I do. I just found the mute button. Thank you very much for allowing me to make this comment. The question about whether or not to change some of these definitions, I just want to weigh in that I've been monitoring quite a bit about what's been going on in the language of the town and Los Altos Hills about the fire safety. And earlier I mentioned people's anxieties getting raised because of the fire. And I think that it is incumbent upon the town and the fire district to respond to that in a way so that residents could feel like something is being done in response to the situation. And the descriptions of what was being discussed, that does sound like something that would be helpful for the residents. And I just want to offer that assessment myself and to say that I encourage everything we can do to help them, help residents feel listened to and to reduce the anxieties. And there's a lot of ideas that I'm sure you guys are thinking of and residents have as well about this. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. Sir, anyone else?
That appears to be it.
Okay. All right, I think we're now ready to move to actually do a roll call vote.
You kind of froze, but I think you're asking for roll call, so.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes seven to zero.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for constructive comments and discussion there. We'll now move to item 12, successor strategic plan report. Items 15A through 15B, which are the memorandum report. And item B, which is received draft section of Los Altos Hills County Fire District 2020 to 2022 successor strategic plan. Strategic planning consultant Scott, please present, please provide the report and present the draft section of the SSPP.
Great. Thank you, President Warren, and good evening, members of the commission and the public. I am back before you tonight with brief comments on the status of the successor strategic plan. In your packet, you have a short staff memorandum, some narrative language, and the revised summary chart of goals and objectives. My goal this evening is to, number one, ask the commission if these goals adequately capture and reflect the vision they see for the next two years. And number two, to take any public input on the goals or the process. So the district is wrapping up its initial five-year strategic plan. During this time, the district has built an efficient organizational structure, initiated many programs, supported training and community groups, and developed communication channels for the community on issues around protecting life, property, and the environment through education, preventative measures, and emergency response services. This successor strategic plan builds on that progress. For decades, the district has contracted with Santa Clara County Central Fire to provide emergency medical response and fire suppression 24/7 for the community. The district supplements these emergency services by focusing on proactive steps, measures to prepare for emergency and natural disasters. These include education programs that reduce vegetation and support of a variety of community groups such as CERT and amateur radio. On October 6, we heard more than 135 residents speak about the district's contributions to the community. There's a consensus, the community seeks support for their unique local, social, and ecological characteristics. The descriptive term that I like is a local response network. And this term comes from a white paper, the 21st Century Fire and Emergency Services White Paper, which was created through CPSC, the Center for Public, sorry, Center for Public Safety Excellence, and ICMA, which is the International City County Management Authority Association. And they use this term of local response network, which is a variety of agencies working together to deliver services to ensure a safe and resilient community. And I think a great example is the, to refer back to the incident President Warren mentioned at the top of the meeting, which occurred early this morning when central fire suppression responded to a fire and made short work of this fire sparked by a wire arcing in the wind near the brush. The, the report from central fire included this quote. "Good vegetation clearance on an adjacent property helped to limit the spread of fire," unquote. So I think this is a good visual of how there is the emergency response that is, that reacts immediately, as well as the proactive response from the planning and preparation of the district. So with all that said, in that context, I would like to just quickly look at one chart that's in the packet. And in order to assess the level of current service and plan for future service, we have engaged in what's known as a SWAT analysis. This is an organizational self-awareness exercise, which is transparent in terms of identifying our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and figuring out how to emphasize and use, use the strengths and opportunities to move forward and how to also be aware of the things that we might consider harmful. So this chart is intended to provide a visual. And if you look at the rows, you see a blue band of things that have some internal control. Those are the strengths and weaknesses. And below that, the row is external factors, opportunities and threats, which the district often has less control over. And then if you look at the columns, there are helpful components in the green band. And we also aware, are aware of the components that are more harmful to the district's activities and to the community itself. So this is a way of thinking about the, the standard SWAT analysis and really trying to harness those things that are positives for the district and use them to grow and develop the district. So then I would like to move on to the chart that is in your packet. Again, this is just a summary to be able to look at all six goals at one time. And I will just briefly refresh our memory on these goals. They've had some revisions since you've last seen them. And then I won't go through each of the objectives. But again, I'd like the commission to be thinking, does this adequate, adequately capture all of the things that you would like to accomplish in the next two years? Or are there some areas that we need to revise further?
So Marcy, before you go on, Commissioner Kearney has his hand raised.
Oh, sure.
Thanks. Hey, great work, Marcy. Thanks for doing this. I just have a question about the upper left box in the SWAT analysis. Just a sentence that I don't understand. So I don't, I don't understand what district parcel uniquely located for fire protection use means as an internal helpful thing.
Sure. That refers to a, a district parcel land. We actually saw a picture earlier in the meeting that was, was cleared. Yeah.
I understand now.
And that is.
The specific parcel.
Yes, right. And there are some, where it's located could add value in terms of fire response and a whole bunch of other things. So that's what that is.
Thank you.
If there's a way to better clarify that, should it say district-owned parcel? Would that help?
That would be good, Marcy. District-owned. That's vacant right now. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that question. Anything else on the SWAT while we're here? Okay. So on the goals chart, let me just walk through briefly one through six, and they are organized with a, a specific intent. Goal number one refers to the, the Annex IV, which is the Community Wildfire Protection Program for this region. And the addendum for residents, that is a document, a layperson's guide to the Annex IV and the CWPP, which I think is a great tool for the community. We have been able to learn after each significant fire incident. And that learning is very important. And it's important to update these documents from time to time to incorporate new fire science components and guidance. So this is critical to the district as we heard the general manager refer to this as one of our pillars. And this informs our various programs as well. So there's a process outlined here for how that would happen moving forward, as well as a communication plan to roll this out to the community. Second goal is related to the county's management audit. As a dependent district of the county, it is important to recognize the, the changes to the district operations and committing to the county policies and procedures. So that is the purpose of that goal. Goal number three is the Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Programs. These are the wide variety of programs that the district has in place, as well as areas in which to branch out and continue to focus work over the coming two years. There's a reference specifically to using GIS and that technology to aid in some of the programs to be more efficient and more effective. And I'd also point out, you, you'll be hearing later in the meeting tonight on the Page Mill Road work, which is very important to evacuation routes and safety of transportation routes. So again, a lot of different topics covered in this item, but it is really the, the critical work that is delivered by the district in terms of programs. Goal number four is about hydrant maintenance, repair, locations, and additions. Again, there's an item on tonight's agenda that has great historical information about the water systems in this area. What is the district's role? What are the utilities' roles? And I know there are a number of questions in this area. The, the district is seeking guidance from the county, as well as to the best way to allocate resources in this area. Obviously, water flow is critical to fire protection. And so this is a key goal for the district. Goal number five is about regional work, working with agencies and other groups throughout the community and the region. This also incorporates the use of technology around communication. We have learned recently of some of the Central Fire purchases with the Moses Satellite Communication System. Zone Haven has recently been implemented. So there's some new technologies coming out that are really, really important in terms of community safety. And other areas such as warning signals, fire cameras, other areas to look at over the course of the next two years. And again, going back to that term of a local response network, this is how the district can work with all kinds of different groups to continue to provide services to the community and maintain the safety and resilience of the community. Final goal, number six, addresses organizational flexibility. Here, this is about sustaining staff and administration to be able to continue to support all of these programs and the work that the district has in store. And so that's the, the focus of goal number six. So with that said, I would invite any questions or comments from the commission.
Any questions from the commissioners? Comments? Feedback?
Well, just said, I spoke with Marcy previously on this topic, and I just want to thank her for taking on a very complicated, what started as a simple task and has turned into a very complex one through a lot of change in our organization very quickly and a lot of more sophisticated thinking than we even started with. So I want to thank her for that. And I'm really impressed the depth at which she's taken this.
This is Duffy speaking, if I may. I would like to just emphasize the need to address the wildfire protection. And if CWPP Annex IV is going to do it, then we got to really crack down and get it done. And I tried to express this earlier to a number of our members who are concerned and our public that's concerned about the need to get something out to our residents. We can't wait forever for the state and the county to get their act together to decide what we're going to do for the county as a whole with respect to wildfire protection. We're living in it right now. And so I'm very anxious to see us put something together. And if CWPP can do it, let's get it done. And I suggested that we put a tiger team together right away. And since it's number one on our goal agenda, I would urge us to really work diligently to get this done. So perhaps Jay can address the status that we're at with the Annex IV rewrite that we want for residents. That would be great. So I would say, yes, we should get cracking on it.
Thank you, Duffy.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the commission?
I would just echo the same thing that Duffy said. I, you know, I read through this again. It's got more details in it. It's, it's still not as actionable as, as what I, I'd be looking for, but I frankly don't want to keep pounding away on this thing. I think we take this and view it more as a strategy, which is what it is, and then turn it into a plan.
Thanks, George. All right. Any comments from the public? Sir, does anyone have their hand up?
Not that I can tell. Anyone interested in making a comment?
Alan has his hand up.
Oh, just kidding. Alan's ready. Go ahead, Alan.
Thank, thank, thank you very much. It took me a while to find the button to put my hand up. I guess some of my comments are similar to the ones that I made at the last session. I reinforce George's comments about action. The document is very soft. It has a lot of terms, evaluate, cooperate, so forth and so on. But it doesn't have measurable goals. Two years from now, you could in principle, do nothing and have achieved the, the goals because there's nothing here to, to find from a performance measurement standpoint. I'd also like to reinforce the fact that it still doesn't contain the district's principal responsibility, which is providing fire protection, emergency services to constituents. Basically, the things that the Central Fire does every day, for, every day for us. I don't understand how that can't be a strategic objective for the district. And I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
The district contracts with Central Fire to provide the emergency service response. And so I guess if, if there could be a little more clarity about what is intended there, how you might see that, Alan, I would guess that you might be looking at specific measures in terms of response, et cetera. Is that your thought?
Yes, the, the, thank you very much. Yes, the fire, the fire department is contracted to perform specific services and, and there are guidelines for those specific services. And hopefully, they'll meet those. And, and also there may be additional things over time that we would like to achieve in terms of reducing response times in the, in the northern part of the district, which may drive investments in either facilities or, or, or equipment. So many of these things may be able to be taken from the Central Fire Department's strategic goals and objectives. But I just think it's to have nothing, to show nothing that relates to the activities that are done on a day-to-day basis just seems to be remiss to me. Thank you.
So I think that the, the comment about the northern part and sort of the western boundary is really important in terms of transportation routes there. And I think that is a focus in the Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Programs. And so thank you for that feedback. I think I also wanted to make one additional comment with regard to goal number one. I think what's important is for the district to work carefully with the wildland specialists. I understand Central Fire is in the process of filling a position there that I think would be a key resource for the district in working in the, the addendum and the Annex IV. I, I think that, sorry, I lost my train of thought there.
You were talking about wildland.
Let me add one more comment that the discussion that occurred earlier around enforcement. There also is the issue of standards and, and codes in terms of, of building. And that is not in this plan. There had been some discussion earlier that really enforcement isn't really a function of the district and standards and codes are more government entities at the local level and the state level. And so I thought I would check in with the commission. I haven't heard any specific feedback in that area. So I think we are tracking properly along those lines. And I can see that you'll have continued discussion as you did earlier with regards to inspection and enforcement. Any other particular areas of focus that, that need some discussion at this point? And if not, I think then we will be bringing a document back at the next commission meeting for the commission to review and adopt. And the idea is to have a document that reads well on the website, that can be accessible to the community, to the commission, to anybody, to be able to really see the vision for the next two years. And you know, this really is the big picture. I, I think the commission spends a lot of time talking about detail. And this is an opportunity for us to step back and look at really sort of the broader picture. And I think over time, the staff will be working with the commission on specific objectives and timeframes. And to, just as a final thought, the idea of this process is to put a, a plan in place and then allow the staff and the commission to prioritize the steps and how they wish to move forward to make progress in each of these six areas.
Great. Thank you, Marcy.
Okay. Well, thank you for all the comments and for the support from the commission. And we'll look forward to having a final document for you.
In January. Thank you. Anything else from the commission or the public? All right. Now we'll move on to item 13, receive the emergency services manager's report. This will be items 13A through 13CI, which are reports and events and activities, report on the community emergency response team CERT activities, and approve and authorize execution of professional services proposals and agreement Exhibit A with Lynx Technologies and the memorandum report associated with that. All right, with that, I will turn it over to you, Denise.
Thank you, President Warren. And thank you, all the participants that are joining us from the public and the commissioners this evening. And again, these are items 13A, B, and C. And we will do some follow-up on item 15 with some slides at the end later on in the program. And we will do some follow-up on item 15 with some slides at the end later on in the program. So the first slide we have here, it's just, we're going to talk later on about the shaded fuel break, but it's kind of an overview of the two phases. Next slide. So some of the things that I've been involved with over the last month is noted here. You can see a lot of it's repetitive. We had a very robust informational PIO meeting this morning about the changes that are happening around COVID. So that's going to, I think, continue to be a hot item since we're not having a meeting next month. We will make sure that we put that out in our website and our different links to give you that information as it comes in. So go there to get those updates as that continues to evolve. One of the big items that I did do for the last month is the district-owned parcel cleanup. We're going to talk about that later on. Included with that is some video recording. Again, the goal is to educate the public. We've had to pivot with COVID and do things remotely. So we've found an excellent, excellent silver lining in being able to have video recordings to talk about vegetation management, hazardous fuel reduction, to integrate it kind of in the strategic plans that we've talked about, some of the items we've mentioned, on how do we interface with the public to educate them as one of our mission goals. One of the ongoing items that we've been working with quite a bit too is to, I have about four communities that are interested in various stages of evacuation workshops and also becoming firewise communities. So we're interfacing with Fire Safe Council. They are on this call. We'll be introducing their new CEO tonight also. He is on the call. Seth is on that call along with Eugenia. So I look forward to continuing to work with them on getting those various communities up to speed. I think that's going to be one of the great outreaches that if we can work on having a goal of getting as many local small communities to be involved in their own solutions, identify their own problems and help with their own solutions with our support. That's going to be a great way to get those extra eyes that we need, not relying exclusively on the fire department, but also having input from the community so that they're part of the solution. We're going to talk about some of the Lynx meeting items. And that's about like, also, there are a few people on the call from the Environmental Design Protection Committee I see tonight also. That was a very engaging conversation, a lot of great input there, a rewrite of their landscape guide. So again, it was brought up an excellent opportunity to interface and collaborate in that component as Marcy spoke with, of having all the stakeholders being involved in making these decisions. Okay, next slide, please, Sarah. Some more. I'm going to go ahead and, this was brought up a little bit earlier, but on November 13th at Stevens Creek Park, Santa Clara County Fire did a demonstration about the technology. Marcy has alluded to a couple of those that we're planning on, really excited working with County Fire to integrate those into our planning, as we educate our residents about evacuation, Zone Haven specifically around that, how we can align our firewise communities and our CERT zones into that matrix as that's laid out. I'm going to go ahead and let Victoria, I had to attend remotely. She attended in person along with Commissioner Kearney and President Warren. If they, if, I'm going to have Victoria go ahead and start. And then if either of the commissioners would like to add any comment. Victoria?
Thanks Denise. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Good evening to President Warren and the commissioners, staff and public. I was very honored to go to this event. I learned a lot about some of these items they had here. We had a long talk with Captain Mortenson, who kind of went over Zone Haven and the upcoming interfacing with other responding agencies and then pushing that out. They're hoping to have that done by the next fire season. We saw some of our zones that were already kind of picked out during that demonstration. So very cool to see that's going to really help a lot of our citizens to be able to understand evacuation and how that works. So really looking forward to that. Thanks to also Louisa Rappaport. She went through the alert wildfire cameras, showed us kind of where they were all at, how to work through the website. I encourage everyone to try that out. It's pretty amazing to see what capabilities it has to find fire in our areas. So that was another awesome demonstration that we really were interested in. The Intera cloud-based platform, I know it's been around for a little bit, kind of cool for me to see as I see some of the CAD from the Santa Clara County 911 communications on my end of the world, kind of see how it interfaces. And there's another program that they're hoping to push out called First Do that made Commissioner Kearney and I very happy. Commissioner Kearney, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I mean, it's so my, the conversation that we had with the firefighter who is demonstrating that system really revolved more around some input that we got from some residents a couple of weeks ago who were, who were concerned that when they dialed up for a ride-sharing service, you know, Lyft or Uber, that they were being sent to the wrong address. And so we worked with, through Captain Gluhan and Chief Glass, who got in, who, who got in touch with their GIS people. And I, I think Chief Glass, it was the guy who you had asked to solve that problem, who was, who was doing the demonstration inside the, the management vehicle. But he, so it was super interesting to know how, you know, our large parcels here in, in Los Altos Hills, some of which connect with more than one street or path, actually show up on different streets or paths depending on how the GPS system works. And so we had a fruitful discussion offline as to how, you know, the Santa Clara County Fire updates and improves on continual basis the accuracy of those addressed locations and how, when, and back to, finally getting back to Victoria's point about First, First Do. Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Yeah, First Do.
Yes.
Is that there's going to be a period of engagement with the, with the public as that's being rolled out. And that's going to be a real good opportunity for, for our residents to deeply think about, you know, how, how their, their parcels are being addressed by County Fire and get some confidence that particularly, it's not necessarily the engines that are coming out of 74, but for, you know, other, other rigs that come from outside the area who aren't as familiar with, you know, Moody Road or Sherlock Road, they'll be able to find these places with great accuracy.
Chief Glass, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted the opportunity to say thanks to President Warren and Commissioner Kearney, as well as the staff from the Los Altos Hills County Fire District for showing up. It's, it's always a pleasure to introduce new technology and some of the state-of-the-art, you know, devices that we've got. Again, those are all available to the hills in the event of the need. The command vehicle, we can mobilize the Moses technology to help with cell phone coverage. And then, of course, we're operating right now within Terra and all of our, our First Do response vehicles. We're really looking forward at the rollout of Zone Haven. We, we pressed it into service early for the CZU fire. We felt it was a useful and viable tool to help us identify the potential early evacuation warning that was needed on the Highway 34, 35 and Summit corridors. So again, I think as we begin to roll it out, you're going to see Chief Mortenson making contact with some of the district staff to be able to have some input. We want to definitely try to find a way to integrate some of the CERT zones within there, understanding fully that we, the CERT zones are very large. So we may have to make subsections within the CERT zones. And we need to, you know, identify traffic control points. So it's a cooperative partnership with, you know, it'll be Los Altos Police Department as well as the Sheriff's Office specifically for the hills. So again, I think it's one of these things, it's an emergency management tool. It's a planning tool. It'll provide an excellent platform for the district to be able to communicate to the residents evacuation planning and early warning. So happy to take any questions, a little bit more specific if you want. You know, the First Do size of piece is a, is a structured fire, pre-planned software to help us identify structures on properties as Commissioner Kearney talked about. We're happy to chase down and fix GIS routing issues as they arise. I do want to reassure the commission and the public that the technology that we are utilizing for emergency routing and response is a tier above, probably several tiers above, what a ride-share, Uber or Lyft driver may be utilizing in the field. But to Commissioner Kearney's point, we did, I did identify an anomaly with that one particular parcel and we were happy that we were able to do that. And that was Chief Schumay and his team in operations. So I'm happy to answer any questions specific to the software, the technology. Really good to see the, the district staff and the commissioners present. So thank you again for your participation.
Thanks for the invite.
Okay, I'll, I'll step in if there's no questions right now. I, I just have a couple more slides to go through with CERT and then we have general questions. Thank you for the collaboration from everybody that participated with that. And Chief Glass, thank you for the input and the additional information. So again, I moved to the other component of my report, which is around our community emergency response team and their activities. So I'm going to throw it back to Victoria again, please. Thank you.
Thanks Denise. Just a quick update. We are still working on organizing some bins. We decided to do more targeted approach to how we organize ourselves when we get to the ARC. We kind of did a couple quick little, let's see how it works. And we found some, some things pretty, pretty right away with mapping and things like that. So we've got that kind of locked down a little bit better. We were going to be doing some videos of how-tos at the ARC, but I'm not sure if that's going to work out well now that we're in the purple tier. So we may have to push that off a little bit. I did purchase some WPB Ready Go bags. I think I showed you guys that several months ago. We've organized them, they're ready to be deployed. There'll be three of those at the ARC and two, one at each trailer. So I'm really happy to announce that. The next phase of that will be doing some more purchasing of those bags, giving those bags out to our CERT supervisors and then doing a, a training on what's inside the bag. Everything with the CERT trailers has been fixed. They start, we replace batteries, put gas in them, blow up some tires. So we're, we're really good to go on the CERT trailers. Really excited to talk about our ham radio project. We were able to purchase 12 ham radios for our recon team. Those have been programmed. We've done a little quick how to listen and operate the radio. I get to video Neil doing a great presentation. Thank you, Neil. We will not be communicating on those radios unless we have a license however we're going to be listening in because we're going to be having a drill tomorrow night. It's our collaborative ECC ham and recon drill. We're going to be doing a simulated activation, also using texting. We're going to have a Zoom open to make sure that people can log onto Zoom and, and talk with us in real time if they have any issues. So really looking forward to doing that. Thanks again to Larry Carr, Neil and Dave, as always, for their help with the recon items that we have. We're continuing to train on recon. We're looking through all of our paperwork to make sure it's all updated. We're updating our recon manuals that we have, that we carry. We also have the ones at the ARC that we've updated as well. And we currently have 17 members that are showing up pretty regularly to our recon series. Upcoming collaborations, happy to announce that we have created a training, training calendar. We are inviting all of their CERT groups, sorry, it's been a long day, CERT groups to participate. We have some instructors from different CERT cities, Campbell, myself. I think someone just sent us something from Cupertino. So really excited to do that. These are all remote trainings on Zoom. Obviously, it's kind of, you know, difficult to do skills trainings, but we're going to be doing the best we can with kind of collaborating with some skills versus some Zoom meetings as well. Always looking to improve. So looking to improve our LH CERT website, our part of it, to promote more, better recruitment, put our training videos that we've done on there, our meetings and whatnot. So hopefully, we'll be able to get some of that done in the next couple of months. Also, a Facebook page that we wanted to sort of push out as well, looking for some sample ideas. I think I'm going to look at Campbell CERT, they've got a very huge following. I talked to them a little bit about how they got people involved. I think they've got like 7,000 followers now. So I'm going to kind of see how they do that and, and get us on board with that as well. Still always looking for integrated training with Los Altos Hills for mutual aid response. I think, you know, as we always say, fires don't, you know, stop at different boundaries. So really trying to firm up that teamwork with them as well. If you look below, training activities, we've got quite a stringent training schedule. Tomorrow, we'll be doing our recon drill. Denise is very happily doing a CERT refresher training on fire safety and fire suppression. We are doing the Festival of Lights. We're going to be providing some traffic control as well as doing some shadowing with ham. And they're going to do a little, I think, a little ham net control as well from their homes. So we'll be out there, come say hi. Looks like it's going to be a great event. Other than that, our last meeting of the year, we're going to do cocoa and cookies. I'll be dropping off some hot chocolate and mugs and cookies to those of us at RSVP. We'll be chatting. I got my inspiration from Commissioner Carr, who drinks her hot chocolate every night. It makes me, oh, so happy to, it's all warm and fuzzy. So thanks Commissioner Carr for that inspiration. The next up on our CERT training refresher will be Stop the Bleed. We actually found an instructor that will be able to do the actual Stop the Bleed class since ours got canceled to be instructor. So really excited for that as well. I continue to recon with Larry. And then the last training of the year will be a tactical first aid. I'm going to do a little bit more other than just the Stop the Bleed. And then we're going to be doing a backpack refresh with that, a gift that we have, which is going to be a tourniquet. We're also going to be giving them some quick clot as well. So very excited about that. I think that's the end for me in the report. Thank you.
Actually, you have one more, Victoria, just.
Oh, I do.
Wow. Just, you gave me a little extra information on Festival of Lights, in case you wanted to.
Yes, thank you. I was very wordy in this one. Okay, so just a little more of what we're going to be doing. Our incident commander is Dave Stewart. We're going to go out there, run 430. Our objective is to support traffic flow using our crowd and traffic control training that we have. Currently, I believe we have five CERT signed up. We're looking for a couple more. We also offered to, I offered to run a first aid booth. So I'll be doing that as well out there. The participants are going to be City of Los Altos and Los Altos Hills CERT. The City of Los Altos did not have too many people that have gone through the traffic and child control training. So we are sort of a specialty since we had gone through both the SO training as well as the CERT. So we were able to get more, I think, people out there than, than Los Altos Hills, but we're supporting them as much as we can. Jim Clark from Los Altos CERT will run the ham division as well as Barry, I forgot his last name, I think it's Barry Burns. And of course Drew is helping us to recruit volunteers for that. So thanks for that. Okay, now into report.
Okay. I'm feeling a little bit like the Mark Twain where I'm getting everybody else to do my, my report for me, where he has everybody paint the fence. So I'm going to, with this one, ask Sarah Hendricks to give an update on our mapping and integration. And just before she goes to that, below are pictures of the erosion that happened from the strike to that hydrant that's up in that top left-hand corner of that first bottom picture. If you're, as you're looking at those pictures with this information. Sarah?
Yes, thank you, Captain Gluhan. Good evening, commissioners. You might be having a little bit of deja vu. I'm sure you all recall that at the last commission meeting, you already approved and authorized us to execute professional services with Lynx, with Lynx Technologies for the operational data collection, integration and mapping services. The scope of that project included a custom-built site that would utilize a combination of ESRI and Latitude graphics software products. So during the process of executing that agreement, Lynx Technologies had a meeting with ESRI during which it was determined that ESRI was changing how it works with small businesses and agencies. Staff met with Lynx to discuss this change and how it may affect the district's project. And we determined that because of the ambiguity surrounding the future of the ESRI relationship, staff determined that the most predictable and straightforward path towards the final product would be to use the ESRI ArcGIS online software rather than the custom-built site that we had originally planned on. Using this online software will still allow us to integrate with partner agencies, but the look and feel of the site will be different than originally anticipated. That shouldn't be a big deal because it is going to be an internal site. So really, it'll just be staff using the site and, and we'll just learn how to use that one instead of the other one. This is going to require an annual account fee of $1,000, which is included in the new scope and increases the final project proposal to $14,800 plus the $75 per hour for any work beyond the scope. So staff is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve and authorize execution of a professional services agreement with the revised proposal. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. That concludes mine for now too. You'll be seeing more slides later on for item 15. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Denise, quite an extensive report, a lot of different activities going on. So thank you. So what we need to do here is I want to make sure that there's any questions or comments from the commission on items 13A and B at this point. 13A and B at this point. We'll deal with which is item C, which is the links contract in a moment. But at B and C, excuse me, A and B, any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none. Then let's move to item 13C. So if you look at your packet, we have item 13C, which is the agreement with links technology that that Sarah Hendricks just explained what the background is on the contract. So what I want to do is move forward with, is there any clarifying questions on item 13C at this point, the links contract? All right. So now I will entertain a motion for item 13CI, which is the approval and authorization of execution of professional services agreement and proposal exhibit A with links technology incorporated for operational data collection, integration and mapping services in an amount not to exceed $14,875 and $75 per hour for additional work beyond the initial scope for a period of two years from November 18th, 2020 through November 18th, 2022. That has been reviewed and approved by county council to form and legality. All right. So I'm looking for a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Green moves, makes that motion.
Thank you Roger, I need a second.
Duffy seconds.
Thank you Duffy. All right, I will now, the items now open for discussion. Is there any comments? Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on the item? All right, hearing none. Now we'll now move to vote. District Clerk Ferguson, please conduct a roll call.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes seven to zero.
Very good. Thank you. Well now move to item 14, receive the fire hydrant report. Items 14A through 14A3, which is A, which recommend ratification of construction agreement for emergency replacement of damaged lateral in the vicinity of 1277 Visceno Road, Los Altos Hills. Recommendations to approve to one, which is commission approve and ratify construction agreement with C2R Engineering Incorporated for emergency replacement of damaged hydrant lateral in the vicinity of 12775 Visceno Road, Los Altos Hills for the amount not to exceed $36,780 that was previously executed by the general manager and reviewed and approved by county council for form and legality. Approve required finding, findings related to items 12A on the commission's October 20th, 2020 meeting agenda on the retroactive basis that based on substantial evidence, the emergency created by the leaking water infrastructure serving the hydrant would not permit a delay, a delay resulting from competitive solicitation forbid. And that the act, action to engage the contractor was necessary to respond to the emergency. And to C, excuse me, to three, except update on status of project and determine if there is a continuing need to act on an emergency basis in order to complete the project. All right, with that, district legal counsel, Chilton, please present the items. Chris?
Yeah, I was showing that I was muted. Can everyone hear me okay?
No, we can't. Thank you.
Let me first say that to the chairperson, I would hope that you would not have to read all those items again and that you could move the staff recommendation instead of having to read all those yet again. So the purpose of this, the purpose of these items, as, as the commission's aware, roughly on October 13th, district representatives along with Prisma Hill Water District Representatives. And I don't know to the board secretary if you want to put my memo up as, as an item. I'm going to, I'm not going to read it, but I'm going to follow along a little bit with it. This is a memo from me to the commission as well as the general manager. Essentially the leak was identified at a fire hydrant in the vicinity of 12775, 12775 Visceno Road. And essentially at your October meeting, you authorized the general manager to go into the marketplace and identify a contractor to go and conduct that repair, which included valve work as well as replacement of a lateral across the street. So when I took over representation of the district, one of the things that I work on, as I mentioned earlier, is, is contracting. Generally as a California Fire Protection District, under the Fire Protection District law of 1987, any public works contracting work over $10,000 in value has to be competitively bid. However, there is an emergency exception. And I would argue that at your last meeting, you largely exercised that authority. But the public contract code that grants the authority to, to issue contracts on an emergency basis without competitive bidding contains a requirement that the legislative body makes a finding regarding the need for the emergency and that that's adopted by the commission, first of all. And then secondly, it also requires that at every meeting after the emergency contracting authority is adopted, that there be a report at the next meeting to explain and vote upon the need to continue the emergency action. My sense is in this case, this, this vote is really just intended to create a record of compliance with the public contract code requirement that requires competitive bidding for jobs above, of, above $10,000. I'm pretty sure that Jeff Tarantino or the general manager are going to report that the repair has been completed. So I wouldn't expect this item to come back before your commission again. And so as I mentioned, the first item is really just a completion of the record to ensure compliance with the relevant public contract code provision. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on this item. This is 14A1 through 14A3.
Great. Thank you district legal county council. Chris Chilton, are there any clarifying questions from the commission about what we're doing here? All right, I see any, all right, I'll now entertain a motion for items 14A through 14A3.
President Warren? I would like to ask Jeff, the consulting engineer Jeff Tarantino, he's on the line. And I'd like him to give a report pursuant to 14A3 just to make sure that we have all the information in the record on that public procurement code. So let me introduce consulting engineer Jeff Tarantino from Fear and Laureata.
Great, thank you so much, General Manager Logan. President Warren, commissioners, again, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. And yeah, I just wanted to give kind of a brief update on the completion of the repair work. So I'll lead with the, the good news is it's been, been repaired and back in service. So as, as, as we discussed the last meeting, we were notified that there was a leak and the photos here on the, on the slide show the, the leak that we observed during our site visit. And so we immediately investigated the leak and made the determination that the leak was originating at a valve adjacent to the hydrant. In order to correct the leak, we did require to replace the lateral. Sarah, would you mind going to the next slide? So in order to, to, to correct the leak, we had to replace the entire lateral. And we developed a set of construction drawings showing the work. Those drawings were reviewed and approved by Prisma Hills Water District. We did solicit three bids. So we solicited bids kind of in an informal process. And C2R engineering was determined to be the lowest responsive bidder. The town did issue an approach permit for the work. Sarah, would you mind going to the next slide, please? And that, that way we had full coordination, including identifying traffic control measures and public notification. We further coordinated with Prisma Hills to, to have them review and approve all the materials that were proposed to, to, to be used. So that confirmation that all the materials were consistent with the Prisma Hill standards, including their standard fire hydrant detail. And construction began on November 9th and was completed on November 12th. So this first photo here is the first day of work showing contractor setting up traffic control and getting ready to do saw cutting. We do have one final walkthrough that will perform that with Chief Gluhand tomorrow just to confirm all the works complete. And then we will be coordinating with the general manager to, to complete payment to the contractor, assuming we don't see any issues in our field walk tomorrow. Sarah, would you mind going to the last slide? And I just wanted to show just a couple of photos of the progress construction. The first photo on the left is the work to install a new T and valve. So kind of in the, in the kind of long dimension of that photo, that's Prisma Hill's existing main. In order to correct the leak, we actually had to remove the, the previous T and replace it with a new T. That work did require a shutdown for, for one shift. It was up to, I, I don't know the exact duration of the shutdown, but it was, it was less than eight hours. Prisma Hills assisted the, our, our team to, to notify residences of the shutdown. And we were able to complete that work on the first shift on November 10th. On November 11th, we proceeded with installing the, the lateral. And you can see that in the middle picture, that is the lateral. And what you're seeing there is we have ductile iron pipe and then that plastic wrap is a method of corrosion protection. That's standard. So it's essentially a, a plastic bag that gets slipped over the pipe and then, and you know, for lack of a better term, duct tape to the, you know, to keep it tight. And then the final photo on the right is the, is the hydrant reinstalled. So we were able to reuse the hydrant that was on site. We determined there was no issues with the hydrant. Again, it was with a buried valve that was causing the leaking issue. And so that was restored in the service at the end of shift on November 11th and all paving was completed on November 12th. And that is the end of my report and happy to take any questions if, if commissioners have any.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jay, anything else dad?
No, I, I would consider then with that report, there's just a final walkthrough tomorrow, but I would, would suggest that the emergency is over. And this would not be an item that would need to come back and be reported to the commissioners in January. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. All right. So now I'll entertain a motion here for items 14 through 14A3. You know, motion with permission to accept it.
So move Duffy.
Thank you Duffy.
So seconded by Tyson.
Thank you George. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any discussion from the public? See, hearing none. We will now move to vote. District Clerk Ferguson, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Well now moved on to item 14B, which is consideration recommendation to approve resolution 20-35, granting delegation of authority to the general manager pursuant to public contract code section 22050B1 that allows the board to delegate authority to staff to, to enter into emergency contracts without formal competitive bidding and subject to the applicable legal requirements and review and approval by county council as to form and legality. All right, district legal county council, Chilton, please present the item. Chris, you're muted again.
As someone said, as someone said earlier, it's been a long day. As a, as a follow-on item to the previous item, the same statutory scheme that allows for the district to contract on an emergency basis without competitive bidding. When I mentioned that the Board of Commissioners needed to make those fourth, fifth vote findings, the statutory scheme allows the commission to delegate authority essentially to make those findings at a, at a staff level so that we're not in a position where the commission has to have an emergency special meeting to have those findings made. So the purpose of this resolution is granted authority under state law to allow the general manager in her judgment, if, if a particular situation meets the definition of emergency under public contract code section 1100, which is considered, which is contained in the resolution, to make that determination and enter into an emergency contract on an emergency basis. We did put in some limitations there that the contract would otherwise have to be compliant with all applicable legal requirements, that it would be subject to review and approval by county council. And then the general manager and I agreed that, that a limit of $100,000 would deal with almost all emergency contracting issues that might arise. And beyond that, we would probably want to go to the board anyway. And I would just state for the record that this relates only to public works, construction contracting. It doesn't relate to contracts for professional services. This is specific to the, the fire district's legal authority for public works contracting. And so I would request that the board adopt the staff recommendation approving this resolution. Thank you. End of report.
Great, thank you. Just so the commissions understands where this came from, we were talking about what if the, the scenario that just happened with the lateral, we discovered that leak tomorrow and it's two months until our next meeting. And how would the district staff be able to address it? And this is the result, we want to be able to empower the staff to be able to address an emergency or in this situation, get it addressed, address, you make sure that we, you know, ensure the public safety and are compliant with the law. And so that's where this came from. All right, thank you.
Chairperson, if I could just add one more thing that I meant to add, which was of course, to the extent that the general manager exercised this delegation, we would report out any contract at the next available meeting and provide the district with that same report that was, that we mentioned in the prior item in terms of the status and the need to continue the emergency. That's also contained in the statute as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. That's important. All right, with that, I'll now entertain a motion for, for item 14B.
Spreen moves.
Vaughn second.
Roger, thank you Melvin. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. District Clerk Ferguson, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move to item 14C. Receive update on bids for horseshoe lane erosion repair project and delegate authority to general manager to identify the lowest responsible bidder and authorize general manager to execute construction contract and allocate funds for project with report back for ratification of agreement by the commission that has been reviewed and approved by county council as to form and legality. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Yes, thank you. And this is a really excellent example. The horseshoe lane erosion repair that's following the action that the commission just took and all the information and education basically we all received from county council as to what constitutes an emergency, what are the powers under public procurement code for those emergencies and what action can be taken. Here on item 14C, as you recall, you've heard about the horseshoe erosion repair project for quite some time now. Clearly, this does not identify itself as being an emergency. It is a repair project that is going through the public procurement process, which entails taking bids and having a responsible bidder identified and then action taken to accept the lowest responsible bidder, make the execution of the agreement and move forward with the construction. So with that, there's been quite a time consuming event that is going, that's been going on for a couple of months now. And we're right now in the midst, as I understand, with the public bidding advertising process that has to occur over a number of weeks. And so this really is an effort of collaboration between county council, engineering consultant Tarantino and myself to be sure that we're utilizing the procurement process properly for this erosion, non-emergency erosion repair matter. And so our recommendation is to take the And so our recommendation is to take the action as stated here, so we don't get bogged down between this meeting and the meeting in January and we can. Continue with the erosion repair before the rains get too heavy. So with that, I'd like to introduce engineering consultant Jeff Tarantino and. Mr. Tarantino, could you make comments? And I think you have some updates to give on the erosion repair.
Yes, General Manager Logan, thank you. So commissioners, yeah, since since our last meeting, we as as general manager had indicated, working with county council. And we are in the process of issuing the project for public bid. We expect to have bids. Received probably in early December. The design is large, is complete and ready for bidders to review and we are also in coordination. With the town because a grading permit will be required for completing this work. So we anticipate once we receive bids in early December, we'll review those bids publicly in accordance with Public Contract Code. And then in in connection with in collaboration with county council and general manager will determine the lowest responsive bidder. In order to award that contract. We will further coordinate with the with the town to ensure that we're completing the work in accordance with their grading regulation, which do have some restrictions. On time of year. But we have been in discussions with city engineer Nicole Bauer Sox and and do feel comfortable will be able to to develop a plan of a plan of action. To allow the work to be completed in the month of December, assuming, you know, we don't have any significant rain events. But we'll we'll work closely with the town and with staff to complete the work. So that's that's the update for now and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan and engineering consultant Tarantino. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? All right, so we'll now entertain a motion for. 14C. I we need a motion.
So move.
Yeah. Okay, so we need, so spring, George, did you second it?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. The item is now. Now, is there any, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. Will this circle move to a move to a vote? District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven, zero.
Very good. Well, now move to item 14D, receive report and coordinate with the Santa Clara County Central Fire Fire Protection District. A process to develop policies and guidelines for district hydrants and hydrant infrastructure relocation replacements. And additions with a report back at a future commission meeting. And item D1, which is memorandum report, General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Yes, thank you, President Warren. This is really an important item. I I want to call your attention to it and particularly to the memorandum report. What the member, and by the way, you're learning everything there is to know about hydrants, I think, tonight. And all the various aspects of of the hydrant. Theories that go on. So in the memorandum report, I've really tried to lay out the background. And the attachments are very important because they give a foundation for understanding. How did the district get into the hydrant business and what are we doing in this business? Because so many districts that operate under fire protection have nothing to do with fire hydrants. So really, the. Los Altos Hills County Fire just is a bit of an anomaly. And those attachments are attached to the memorandum report. They are an agreement between Persama Hills Water District and the Board of Supervisors sitting at the Board of Directors for the Fire District. Authored in nineteen nineteen fifty six and then again, the current agreement in nineteen eighty. Well, based upon that information and background. Then I laid out the discussion for what's in front of you tonight. And I just want to summarize it by saying that this recommendation. Is for a process to be coordinated between Central Fire Consultant Engineer. Tarantino, Persama Hills Water District Engineers. To determine the policies and guidelines for hydrant and infrastructure relocation, replacement and additions. And I think it's a very exciting project. It's exciting because we will generate a method for gathering the subject matter experts on water systems and collaborate to develop. Standard operating procedures based upon development policies. From these procedures, legal counsel then can more specifically conduct its legal research and rendering of legal advice. The memo report that I referenced provides historical data. Governing nineteen fifty six and nineteen eighty agreements between Persama Hills and the Board of Supervisors acting as the Board of Directors for the Fire District. And a studied approach for this decision making process pertaining to capital improvement projects. Failures in the hydrant infrastructure or opportunities to improve water flow and pipeline resiliency will result as a. As as a result of this studied approach. This relates back to section 1.1 in the management audit. Where the district was really asked to look very carefully how it expends funds. For these kinds of capital improvement projects. So rather than try to take a case by case approach. My recommendation is to take a studied approach, understanding the foundational backgrounds and documents. Putting the subject matter experts together and coming up with standard operating procedures, asking questions around what we've experienced here. Those are outlined in the memo. And then just saying, okay, now here's our fact finding and then legal counsel will also then opine on the proper. Expenditures of district funds to do that. That's my proposal. I hope that you will find that agreeable and can move this. This process forward and then receive a report back once the study is done. And that's the end of my comments, but be happy to have any questions.
Great. Is, thank you, General Manager Logan, Engineering Consultant Tarantino, Chief Glass and Chief Bowden. Is there any discussion from the commission? Regarding general manager proposal?
No, I did want to thank you for the the history report. It was a very enjoyable reading to see the history of. And the well coordinated history of how we came to own, build and own these hydrants. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Chief Glass, since I've kind of thrown Central Fire in here, any comments? We've had some preliminary discussions about this kind of a cooperation together.
No, I just wanted to thank the general manager for reaching out and collaborating on this. I agree, the history lesson was valuable. It is an anomaly. Definitely not something I've seen where a fire district has been in charge of the water supply system. So it's it's been an interesting month, you know, working with you on this. I appreciate that collaboration and hopefully our fire prevention division can support. Through water and access where where needed as you guys move forward managing the hydrant system.
Thank you, chief. Consulting engineer Tarantino, you've been kind of up to your elbows in this conversation also. Any comments that I can ask you to to make? In regard to your perspective on this this process and project?
I know, I just just just. Kind of briefly, it's going to be a a good process to be able to work together with the with the the firefighting team and and because we really do need to have kind of a. A process in place, especially as we continue to coordinate with Persama Hills Water Dish because they go through and do do main replacement projects and, you know, where is it appropriate to to implement fire hydrants and? And how we move forward working, working with the other agencies. So yeah, no, it's going to be a good process. Looking forward to participating.
Thank you. And then I'll just call on legal counsel, Chris Chellidin, for a perspective from a legal perspective for how you see this helping. As you are doing research, is this helpful to you in gathering these facts and this body of information? And then your legal research can be more focused and targeted as a result.
Chris, you're still muted?
Yep, I'm with you. I got it. Absolutely. It'll be super helpful. Particularly in terms of being able to streamline these so that we're not reinventing the wheel every time. And that we have sign off from county fire as to what their standards are and what they're looking for. We do have these. Dated agreements and dated documents which are super helpful. But. Frankly, I've been getting up to speed and focused on this meeting and I would expect that after this meeting, I will have more time to turn my attention to. The legal research that the general manager mentioned on some of these larger issues. And just for a bit of levity late in the evening, I did notice that the nineteen fifty six agreement shows that there are only five attorneys in the entire county council's office. And I think we're above a hundred now. So, you know, if fifty years is any indication, we've definitely increased our size quite a bit.
Thank you for that. That's a cheer at the end of your comment. I appreciate it. So I think, you know, you you find this is what collaboration is about. This is what collective, collective synergy produces. So. I think for a difficult subject. This is a good process to move forward with and I really look forward to it. And this is going, and if you go back and look at the the goals, the strategic plan goals. Under the hydrant goal for, these are enumerated as being part of what that strategic plan would be. So it's, we've embraced it here. Out of the audit into the strategic goals and now into this conversation and action by the commission. So thank you. End of my, end of my report. Thank you, President Warren.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan and team. Is there any discussion from the commission? Any discussion from the public?
Alan has a comment.
Yes, Alan.
Thank you very much. I'd like to point out a couple of things. First of all. Five hundred hydrants were were built and installed and many of them were replaced over the last ten years. So there must be some standards that already exist that described where those hydrants went. How they were, how they were built and how they were replaced. And PACPOR and Persama Hills Water District has been doing this for a long period of time. So. I would think that we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel here, that there'd be an opportunity to get that information and. Start, start from that that point. Second point I'd like to make is that the. Hydrants are not just in Persama Hills Water District. We may not own the hydrants that are in. Cal water, but the fire district is responsible if pipes are replaced and. Extended or so forth that the specifications, assuming the Public Utility Commission allows it, applies to Cal water as well as to. Hydrants in Persama Hills Water District. And lastly, it wasn't clear to me from the description of this that this would entail the. Legal analysis as to whether or not the fire district could participate. In upsizing pipes or making pipes more resilient, but from my understanding of. How how the manager has represented it, this will be the process by which that will be determined. Is there a timetable for completing this project? Thank you.
Jay, is there a timetable for this project?
We will be formulating a work plan, I'm sure. And moving forward. Right now, we're catching our breath from a very. Long and arduous October, starting with October 6th and now moving into committee meetings. So. Yes, you know, that's luckily, we've got some time to catch our breath here and we'll move forward with the work plan.
All right, look forward to report back in January on that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other comments from the public? All right, with that, we'll now move to item 14E. Approve and authorize execution of the Second Amendment to the June 16th, 2020 Professional Services Agreement with. Friar and Loretta for consulting engineering services for a period of two years from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022. In the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars per calendar year and replace the charge rate schedule to. Exhibit A with a 2021 charge rate schedule and. Subject to general manager approval with a charge rate schedule effective January 1st, 2022. That has been reviewed and approved by county council as to form and legality. And item. E1, which is the memorandum report, General Manager Logan, please, please provide the report.
Yes, and thank you, President Warren. Again, you'll find in your packet a fairly extensive memo. About the on call engineering consulting services provided by Friar and Loretta. This would be the Second Amendment. And in the memo report, there's also a budget table at the end as an attachment. And I also just threw in the first memo that I wrote when Friar and Loretta was was retained back in July. So there's a lot of information here. That doesn't need to be restated. But in summary, I would like just to. Recommend approval and authorization of the Second Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement. Between the Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Friar and Loretta, Inc. for on call engineering consulting services. In the memo report, please note the solid background that uniquely qualifies Friar and Loretta for engineering consulting services to the district. And an updated budget review table. I interviewed and networked with for various firms prior to finding Friar and Loretta. And I am very pleased to report that the fit with Friar and Loretta is excellent for the needs and projects with the district. And so with that, you know, entertain any questions or if Jeff Tarantino would like to make any comments, but I would just recommend approval of the Second Amendment.
Yeah, General Manager Logan, I just wanted to say, thank you very much for the opportunity to work with the district and the commissioners and we just feel very fortunate. To have the potential work with you with the team for another couple of years. So again, thank you very much and look forward to supporting the district.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Thank you, Engineering Consultant Tarantino. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? All right, I'll now entertain a motion for 14E. In motion. From the commission.
So moved, Kearney.
Thank you, Terry. Need a second, please?
Vaughn second.
Thanks, Melvin. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item?
Alan has a comment.
Yes, Alan.
Thank you. I I guess I have a question for the new council. What provision allows this contract to be extended without going out for competitive bids? Thank you.
Through the chair, I generally wouldn't respond to questions directly from the public unless given direction by the chairperson or the commission. I'm happy to answer the question, but.
If you, Chris, this evening, if you could, please?
Sure, I mean. So essentially, the original law that I refer to, which is in the Public Contract Code that applies to. Fire districts organized under the Fire Protection District Law of nineteen eighty seven also contains a provision that is. Related to contracts for services and professional services. And it gives the. Fire district two options. One option is to follow the procurement process of the county in which the district is located. And then there is a much more narrow, specific process. Currently, the district is following the county's procurement process. And under these circumstances, I did consult with Jay Logan. When the original contract was entered into, she did conduct an informal survey of the marketplace as she mentioned earlier. To determine whether or not. The this firm was was appropriate for the district's needs. There's no specific legal requirement that every single time. That the contract is amended, that there would need to be another competitive solicitation. Applying the county's rules, we do have a five year rule. That generally contracts that are extended for five years or more must be sent out to a competitive solicitation. Under limited circumstances, there is an exception. To the five year rule, but for the most part, the general rule is that the contract would have to be bid out. If it extends for longer than five years. In this case, this contract, my understanding is a relatively new contract. And so we would still be within that five year general rule that is applicable to the district by analogy, by analogy. Through the county's procurement rules. I hope that wasn't too detailed, but but in general, that would be my view of this particular contract amendment.
Great. Thank you, county council. All right, with that. If there's no further discussion, we'll now move to a roll call vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a vote. Roll call.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes seven, zero.
Excellent. Well, now I move to item 15, Hazardous Fuel Reduction Report. Fifteen A, Receive Defensible Space Brush Chipping and Debris Removal Program Report Pilot Project Area Three. Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks, please provide the report.
Thank you, President Warren. Good evening again, commissioners. As you can see on the slide, the defensible space brush chipping. And debris removal program contractor bids for September were nineteen. and debris removal program contractor bids for September were nineteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Eighty-two residences were serviced and two thousand, eight hundred ninety-one cubic yards of brush were chipped. The cost per cubic yard of brush was six dollars and sixty-eight cents, which is up from August about a little bit more than two dollars per cubic yard. There were also a lot of service changes or changes to service requests this month with twenty-eight cancellations, a few change dates and a few residents whose piles were either not ready, meaning they just hadn't had them prepared, or perhaps they had some debris in there that was not suitable for the chipper or the piles just were not found. We're continuously working with Fire Safe Council to improve communications to our residents to ensure that they understand the schedule and receive plenty of communication and confirmation of service. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks. Is there any discussion from the commission?
Commissioner Kearney?
Hey, Terry.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Sarah. Um, yeah, so is the, are the thirty-eight total changes, or I'm sorry, the thirty-eight, the twenty-eight canceled, are those included in the number of residents or are those not within?
Those are not included in the number of residents that receive service. And also, it's worth noting that these values, the number values are the bids. And so when we receive the final invoices from Fire Safe Council, which we have not received yet for September, because they usually come in the October package. If, if any of the addresses that were included in the bid did not receive service, they typically adjust the invoice for us. And in addition to that, if we have any on-call service requests that were not included in the original bid package, those will then be added to the invoices. So these numbers aren't always final.
Great, thanks. So would you expect then that eleven for week three, the cost of eleven dollars per cubic foot, which is like twice two X any of the previous amounts will come down?
Um, I'm not sure when the cancellations occurred during this project window. But I have been doing a little bit of number crunching, and I think that what we're seeing is that if you take a look at week one, sixteen hundred cubic yards of brush were chipped, but only twenty-two residences were serviced. And then in week three, eight hundred cubic yards of brush were chipped, but forty-nine residences were serviced. So I think that the reason that these bids are coming in a little bit higher is if a contractor has to visit multiple residences, but they're not spending very much time there. So we have to take into account the fact that they're traveling more. Because of COVID nineteen restrictions, they might have multiple vehicles because they're not allowing their team to, to travel together. And I think that there are a lot more expenses when we have a greater service with less cubic yards. We're gonna need more data to really verify that, but I think that that's my hypothesis.
Okay, yeah, no, and we talked about collecting more data back in April when we started this project. So the, because I didn't, I didn't look back, and it looks like the, the bid range is tightening up dramatically, right? So the minimum and maximum bids. Apparently, they've gotten more accurate over the last six months or so.
Yeah.
Would be interesting to know why it is that, you know, one week is literally two X any week. No other questions?
Any other questions from the commission, from the commission? All right. Is there any public comments, questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you. We'll now move to item fifteen B. Receive report on district lot cleanup completed November third, twenty twenty and video project progress. Emergency services manager Captain Bluehand, please provide the report.
Thank you again, President Warren and Commissioners. I have Sarah bring up those last couple of slides from my emergency services manager report. I apologize for the, the late evening. I will buzz through this. We also have a, a small video clip, but we'll watch that at the end for anybody that'd like to stay on of the parcel project. Again, I spoke to this a little bit earlier. We'll go to the next slide. That was the erosion that we talked about in the previous item. These are the chipping. We saw some of the pictures. This is the before and after picture, the before. You can see quite a bit of vegetation. And the key point that we're looking at in this, when we were talking about making the video recording sessions around this, is removing both horizontal and vertical fuels. So we've removed a lot of the fuels, the grasses at the base, the extra brush at the base. And then on the right, you see a tree that looks more like a park-like setting. Again, the grasses have been mowed and the brush has been removed. And the instructional video will, will be documenting that. We additionally did a chipping video where we prepared a simulated pile. Emily Drain spoke to that requirements of our, and standards of our program. And the video recording was also done of that so that we can produce a, a chipping video to link in on our website for frequently asked questions, or how do you do this, or what's excluded? Next slide. The next slides are just some pictures. When we originally identified that map in the previous slide, we have fourteen individual projects. You can see before and afters. The two slides here above on the left and then below with the power line, that's the after. We had a, a tree, that oak tree had a, it was diseased and dying, so it was removed. Again, you see in the four slides to the right, the two, to the center was a walnut tree, a large canopy above, grass below, and then the final product below was a trimmed, limbed-up tree with grasses removed. And then we have another oak tree, again, canopy cleaned out of dead debris. So we were focusing on dead, dying, diseased or damaged when we evaluated the individual plants and then just the configuration of ladder, the horizontal and vertical fuels and how we could break up that continuous fuel bed again to lessen the fire risk. Next slide. And again, here's some before and after pictures on this. Uh, we're kind of in reverse here. As you look at the top picture to the left, that was a grove of pine trees. Ironically, during the time that we originally made our parcel visit, several months before this project, we had identified two of three trees definitely dead. In the interim, the town of Los Altos Hills had tagged two of those trees. So they've had, I contacted Jacob, who works for Los Altos Hills Town, and he said that they are going around identifying dead trees in Los Altos Hills. I don't know to what end, but again, here's some before and after pictures on the left of that. And then this is on the right, these three pictures are looking down Horseshoe Lane. And again, the, the kind of the comparison, it, it looks a little more park-like now, and that's the kind of the end goal. But we are also trying to respect that some of these trees did have a function, and that was screening or road noise reduction. So we did leave a little bit of the screening effect while still appreciating trimming up the lateral fuels. Next slide. And then this is just to finish out. We don't really have anything else other than I wanted to give you a quick update on this. We're going to talk about some Fire Safe Council updates in the next agenda item, but we have had the letters mailed out. Those have gone through the different layers of the Fire Safe Council for approval. Twenty-six residents received letters. Those letters just went out I think yesterday, Friday or yesterday. So twenty-six residents will be contacted about assisting with getting a little bit more into the easement of their property than the stand, standard ten to fifteen feet to go a little deeper to do vegetation management for our shaded fuel break in phase two along page mill rows. Contractors have already put out bids in this process, and Fire Safe Council will choose that bidder when we're ready. That's, I believe, the end of my slides in my presentation. Like you said, at the end, if you want to stick around, we'll run the quick little video, but I to appreciate everybody's time. Let's get through our agenda items, if that's okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Captain Bluehand. Is there any discussion from the commission?
Congratulations. Looks great. I can't wait to see the video.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. We'll now move to item fifteen C, which is approve general manager negotiate terms and conditions of an agreement with Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council for program services for communications, outreach, educations, COE that include home ignition zone, HSE surveys, hazardous fuel reduction, HFR services to include shaded fuel breaks, defensible space, brush chipping and defense, and debris removal program services and professional services and a contract term that starts no earlier than January twentieth, twenty-one and ends no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two with a report back at the January commission meeting. General Manager Logan, please present the item.
Yes, thank you, President Warren. Uh, the district is most, most grateful for the expert services rendered by Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council under two separate service agreements and the amendment thereto. It is the intention of the general manager to discuss with Fire Safe Council the terms, condition, and budget contained in a new master agreement with program and services components. This can be completed with a report back and a request for agreement approval at the January nineteenth meet, commission meeting. To speak tonight about the programs and just give you a general overview of Fire Safe Council, I've asked Managing Director Eugenia Render and the CEO for Fire Safe Council to be here and to provide some comments. I always find Eugenia you to be extremely inspiring and motivating, as I found today when I was sitting on the Board of Directors meetings with Fire Safe Council at one thirty this afternoon. And I'm just always awed, amazed at how articulate and how committed you are. So pressure's on now. And Seth also was wonderful to sit in on the meeting today and, which was your first meeting. So with that, please meet our seven commissioners, the public, our, our legal counsel, and all the staff that's so proud to be working with you, too. Eugenia, that's for you.
Eugenia, you're on mute.
Are we there yet?
Now we can.
We're there.
Well, you know, my bedtime was officially three minutes ago, so sorry about the muting. We're really happy to be here and happy to, you know, work with you as one of our city partners. You all are very motivated and have really kept wildfire priorities in the forefront of all the efforts for your town. So, um, kudos to you. I want to back up a little bit. I've, I've spoken with some of you before in the past years that we've been serving, but I thought I would just give a little overview for those of you who aren't quite as familiar with the Fire Safe Council. We're a nonprofit and we have multiple programs and services. And the main goal, our mission, is to mobilize people to protect their homes, the community, and the environment. And that comes in a three-prong approach with our programs, which are, as mentioned before, COE, um, HFR and our planning program. So if we could trade sharing of the screens a moment, I'd like to show you a page out of our newly completed.
Eugenia, I made you a co-host, so you should be able to share your screen.
All right, I'm just. Here we go. All right. So now you should be able to see. We're going to distribute this. You're, you're going to be receiving a copy of this. I can't move you. Here we go. Um, this is one of the pages from the, or annual report, and the reason I bring it to you today is because it explains what our three programs are, gives you an overview. And this is the services that, you know, we offer and have been expanded since October twenty nineteen, when we first went into you know, supplying these for you and went into our very first agreement. My goal here tonight, as we're approaching renewal and to present to you in January, is to create a master agreement that offers these services without the amendments and things that we keep going through and changing. So the master agreement will address the services that you see here in our three departments. And it will also match the, the cycle of your strategic plan. And I was in on one of your strategic plan meetings to help support that process, just as Jay and Denise were in on our strategic plan development process earlier this year. And then what would happen is you would be in control of the budget, which would be an exhibit. So we wouldn't have to keep updating and amending our plan and our services piecemeal. You would have an overarching master agreement, and you would have control of an annual budget that would be updated and approved by you and not to be exceeded by you. It would be an exhibit. And then rolling into the following year, you could, you could change that without having to go back through your, and re, and re adjust your master agreement. You could just put things in the budget categories that match this, depending on what services you want to expand or you know, reduce on your CWPP goals and the other kinds of objectives that you all are working on. So really quickly, our COE program is where the defensible space presentations happen, the wildfire evacuation presentations happen, working with Denise and the CERT program. It's where the individual home ignition zone inspections, the one-on-one inspections are about ninety minutes out at each resident, walking through and educating them on the specifics of their property. And it's where our Firewise Community Support Program originates. And then our hazardous fuel reduction program, that's where your chipping program resides. And it's also where both phases of your page mill fuel break program or projects have been and where the parcel, the parcel project has been. And then finally, this one is new, so you probably aren't familiar with it. What we've discovered as we've grown through the last few years, especially with multi-agency projects and the SR seventeen project is that we really need a planning program to handle the environmental permitting and the liaison between the agencies. So for example, county roads and the right-of-way on the sides of, of page mill, traffic control, those kinds of things. So we have now dedicated staff that work behind the scenes, doing all that prep to make sure proper paperwork and timing is in place for those projects. And to comply with all the new COVID things that seem to change on a pretty frequent basis. So that's also where some of that resides. So as we go forward and we bring you, you know, the master agreement that we've referenced, these are the areas that we'll be looking at, and then we're, I've extrapolated a sample budget to give to Jay to go ahead and analyze based on the services that we've provided you in the partial year that we're all, that we're in right now. So that is the end of my report. And are there any questions?
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan and Fire Safe Council Managing Director and Blair. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? All right, with, thank you. Eugenia, if the, if there are none, let's move forward with a motion. I'll now entertain a motion for fourteen, excuse me, fifteen C. Need a motion in a second, please? Thank you, Terry. Need a second, please? Melvin, thank you. All right. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? This is fifteen C. Hearing none. Is there any discussion from the public? Hearing none. We'll now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr? And Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven two zero.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now move to item fifteen D, which is approve delegation of authority to the general manager to amend term of agreement with Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council for defensible space brush chipping and debris removal program to the extent to extend to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one that has been reviewed and approved by the county council as to the form and legality. General Manager Logan, please present the report.
Thank you, President Warren. This is a, a amendment simply to extend the term of the brush chipping debris removal agreement with Fire Safe Council that will expire the end of December. And so this is a way of moving the brush chipping program through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And you'll have the master agreement back in front of you, and then it'll all be wrapped into a master agreement. So this is a little bit of just a, a continuation of brush chipping. And I would recommend approval of the delegation of authority to the general manager for the amendment to extend the term to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I'll be working with county council on making sure the form and legality is proper. Would answer any questions or make any comments, and that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, General Manager Logan. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? All right. I'll now entertain a motion for fifteen D.
Vaughn, so much, so move.
Thank you, Melvin. Need a second, please? Thank you, George. All right. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, will now vote District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Motion passes seven two zero.
Great. We'll now move to item sixteen Personnel Update. Item sixteen A, approve and authorize execution of Second Amendment to General Manager Employment Agreement to Joe and Logan, extending the term of the agreement to December thirty first, twenty twenty one, updating work requirements from half-time employment, minimum of twenty hours per week to full-time employment, minimum of forty hours per week, and adjusting pro-rate annual salary from one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and seven thousand one hundred dollars and providing fifteen days of paid vacation, updating the timing and scope for performance evaluation, updating notice provisions of the District Legal Counsel that has been reviewed and approved by County Council as to form and legality. All right, so this item here is, as we mentioned at the October meeting, after two years, two and a half years, Jay, or two, two years as with us, we have come to realize that Jay is we need to employ her full-time for all the work she's doing in growing and leading and managing the staff, and especially with the added requirements that were levied upon the Commission recently through the audit process. And as a result, we, as we discussed in October, we decided we wanted to move forward with making Jay a full-time employee. And so this is the result of that. Roger, anything to add to those comments?
No, as you remember from last time, I'm thrilled to have this position be a full-time position. And I think we are all incredibly amazed at the person we managed to fill that as our initial General Manager. I'm very pleased to have this contract going forward. I feel much better for us as a district, having this contract completed.
Thank you, Commissioner Spreen. Is there any clarifying questions from the Commission?
Yes, I have a question for Roger. This is George. How is it, Roger, you managed to say all that without saying, and George, I was right? Because I know I know you're thinking it, and you know what? I accept it. I accept it, Roger. You were right. I was the conservative one, but I've seen, I've seen what we've gotten. And I think we're getting plenty of bang, bang, and buck here.
I'm just trying to surprise everyone with a little humility for once.
Any further questions for the Commission? All right, so I'll now entertain a motion for sixteen A. I'm not going to read that again.
Spreen moves.
Tyson, second.
Thank you, George. All right, the motion is now. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? Is there any public comment on this item? If there is no further discussion, we'll now move to vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Emphatic, yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Not emphatic? Commissioner Tyson?
There we go.
Commissioner Tyson?
A powerful yes.
Oh, powerful. Commissioner Price?
Gratefully, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Spreen?
A humble yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Kearney?
A massive yes.
Love it. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Jay, for agreeing to stay on as our General Manager.
And thank you for the confidence of all the seven commissioners and staff and the community that we serve, the public, the residents. I'm very honored and appreciate your votes of confidence and constant support as we go through this journey together. So thank you. End of my gratitude. It will go on for for a long time.
Well deserved. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to sixteen B, which is approval and authorization execution of First Amendment to Independent Contractor Agreement for consulting services for technical services with Victoria Beebe for a period of one year from January first, twenty twenty one through December thirty first, twenty twenty one, and revise Exhibit A scope and Exhibit B compensation to a rate of fifty-five dollars per hour that has been reviewed and approved by County Council as to form and legality. General Manager Logan, please introduce the item.
Yes, thank you, President Warren, and I just really want to thank Victoria Beebe, who still is on this call for just being such an awesome technical consultant to the district. And I think you've seen the tremendous progress that has been made in the last number of months for the benefit of our community, our volunteers, our Los Altos Hills certs, our ham radio, our recon. Victoria and Denise just demonstrate that every month. And to keep this team together, this would be an extension of Victoria Beebe's in the independent contractor agreement part-time to continue on with us. We lost her for a little bit during the COVID event. And now she's back with us, having the time to be able to dedicate again. So with that, I just want to summarize that part-time independent contractor consultant Victoria Beebe has significantly stepped up to support, promote, and engage Los Altos Hills CERT program and projects. She's vitalized the arc in the supply trailers and conducted weekly Los Altos Hills CERT evening trainings and meetings and speaks at monthly ECC Emergency Communication Committee, Los Altos Hills Town Meetings. Her services are very important to the District Volunteer Program and Community. I recommend this extension of her agreement. And it was a revised scope of work that's it's much more complex now than it was when she started, and then a commensurate revised compensation. So with that, I recommend approval to this amendment to her agreement to extend her term. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Are there any clarifying questions from the Commission? All right, I'll now entertain a motion.
Duffy speaking, so moved.
Thank you, Duffy. Need a second?
Second, Vaughn.
Thank you, Melvin. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Is there any public comment on this? There are further discussion will now vote District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kearney?
Epic, yes.
Epic, oh, yes.
There you go. Thank you, Derek.
Great, and the motion passes seven two zero.
Great. Thank you, Victoria. Thank you for, you know, agreeing to stay on with us for another year.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support, and I look forward to the next year.
Very good. Well, now I move to item seventeen Financial Consultant Report. Item seventeen A, received draft of the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget development. General Manager Logan and Financial Consultant Vargas, please present the items.
Thank you, President Warren and Financial Consultant Vargas. I'll turn this over to you to go through your memo report, if you would please.
Okay, yes, and I first I want to, you know, apologize for getting this to you so late in the game. I sent a little summary, and Jay and I worked on just a very preliminary draft budget for the fiscal year twenty-two. Tonight, I don't want you really focusing on the numbers. We want to focus more on the framework of the budget, and that would be sort of what the expense accounts are going to be that we will allocate the funds to. Now, you recall that we appointed a standing budget subcommittee. They will have a public-held meeting in which we will further discuss sort of the meat of this budget process and then bring back those findings to the Commission at the January meeting. But tonight, it's more of a our Jay and I making sort of the right progress here with with new expense accounts that we've added. And we just want to sort of get consensus that we're heading in the right direction. We will take any comments from tonight when we have the public meeting in December, date to be determined still. That's probably either the second second or week or third week of December before Christmas. And then, like I said, we'll bring it back in January with sort of a official draft, first draft of the budget with actual numbers after much thought. So I just wanted to say some of the the accounts we've added, this is all in line with our strategic plan. It's in line with the CWPP. It's in line with the Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Chart that we've all looked at earlier in the in the meeting. And some of the, I just want to run over real quick, just the expenditure accounts that we've added or proposing to add. There would be a sort of a workshops, conference, seminar expense account that's for the employees to get further development and education. Now, the IC Cost Allocation Plan, we are now part of the County of Santa Clara's allocation allocated cost plan. So those numbers are provided to us by the county of what we are going to be paying to them every annually. We're looking to increase the general analyst position and the operations manager manager position from part-time to full-time. And you can read the memo report there. Excuse me, I'm stumbling. It's it's late, I'm tired. But that'll explain sort of what their positions will be. And of course, in December, I think we'll kind of broaden the definition of what they will be. But, you know, as the district expands its projects and programs, we need to expand the employees as well. There'll be an overtime that'll just you know, small amount just to cover the full, only the non-salaried full-time employees that are working extra hours. We've added Foothills Park Palo Alto Fire Station number eight. So that's a possibility for collaboration to get that foothill station running during the fire season. We've added a fire protection hand crew that would be for development of projects with Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District. We've added a integrated hazardous fuel reduction, open space fuel break program. And that would be for construction of shaded fuel breaks and fire breaks in the open space areas adjacent to the district. We're adding Firewise Communities, and that's workshops and guidance that help neighbors, neighborhoods get organized to work together to protect their homes and community and then be recognized as firewise by the National National Fire Protection Association. And then we wanted to add a temporary refuge area that would just be kind of to develop and prepare refuge areas for people to take shelter in during emergencies. And then I've also, we've sort of renamed, I'm not going to go over all those, but we've renamed some of the old programs. You can see just the terminology so that it matches better our integrated hazardous fuel reduction chart. So that's the memo report, and then I've just kind of laid out. And Jay and I have just kind of, like I said, put some preliminary numbers in there, but this will all be discussed in greater detail at the December meeting of the Standing Budget Subcommittee. And I thank you so much for listening to me so late rattle all this off. So Jay, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I think you've laid it out perfectly. Corey, we've spent a lot of time working this over and again, mapping it to our CWPP, mapping it to our strategic, the new developing strategic plans and goals, mapping it to Fire Safe Council programs, mapping it to what we heard from our community, mapping it to what we experienced with a CZU fire and trying to allocate those kinds of programs and categories and then fund them accordingly. So that was the first stake in the ground, and we look forward to meeting with the standing subcommittee and the public in December to go through this. So again, available to answer questions or just get general comments from the from the Commission. If you've had it, you might want to take a chance to study this a little more. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan and Financial Consultant Vargas. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Looks like a good start to me. Really like seeing station eight there. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? All right, then we will move to thank, it was a good start on the the budget. Look forward to that meeting in in December. We'll now move to item eighteen Commission Member Reports. Item eighteen A, Commission Term Expiration of eleven November thirtieth, twenty the town of Los Altos Hills, City Council Recommendation. General Manager Logan, please present the item.
This is, I'm sorry, you were, you kind of broke.
This eighteen A, did I break up there for a moment?
Yes, just just to mention that one of the Commission vacancies is due to Commissioner Spreen no longer being, will expire from his membership with the City Council from the town. And but I understand he will continue to serve until the town city council replaces that seat or makes a recommendation to replace the seat to Supervisor Semidion's office, and that would probably be sometime in January when the town council convenes and takes up their appointments to committees. So I just wanted to mention that if anybody had any other information they could add to it, the end of my report there.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Is there any public comment on this item? Thank you. Hearing none, we'll now move to item eighteen B, Future Agenda Items. Do commissioners or staff have topics or items they would like to add to future agendas? Commission members, staff? All right. Is there any public comment on this? Hearing none, we will now move to item nineteen Adjournment. All right, anything else before we adjourn?
President Warren, if you want to adjourn the meeting, and if we could keep maybe the recording going and just record the video, if anybody wants to stay on and watch the before and after, it's kind of, it's done by Jackson. It's a pretty good little starter video, kind of a tease of what the parcel looks like on the finished project.
Great, yeah. So let me let me formally adjourn the meeting so that those that don't need to stick around. And those of us who want to stick around, so what we'll do is is that well, this will adjournment, item number nineteen, this concludes the November seventeenth, twenty twenty regular meeting of Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting adjourns at ten twenty-nine PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. We'll keep the recording going to the end of the video, but this concludes the formal meeting, formal regular meeting. All right, let's roll the video, and then we'll conclude the recording at the end of the video.
Thank you, Mark, for a well-run meeting.
Thanks, Roger. Denise, is this coming off of your computer?
I think so.
There's just a massive.
It's coming off Sarah's, I believe. Good, just a minute. It's coming off Sarah's, not mine.
It's coming, and it's loading. Hang on a second.
It's pretty cool. Give it just a minute.
Also tired.
And with the improved, if we all turned off our videos, or does that, is that just nonsense?
Well, we can give you the YouTube link so you can look at it, but I just wanted to give you a little sense.
Sorry, I'm not sure why that's moving so slow.
Why don't we just share? Video resumes not easy.
We'll just, we'll just share the link with you so you can watch it privately. Thank you.
All right, with that, why don't we turn off the recording? Thanks, everyone.